Good evening, I'll call to order the July 27th, 2020 workshop for the Arvada City Council. Call upon Kristen Rush.
Here.
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 Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Present by Zoom.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
I'm glad we have our Zoomi with us. Good to see you across country. Thank you for taking time out from your vacation to do this tonight.
Happy to be here in the technology available.
Yes, we've learned a lot through this. Mr. Devon, we have four workshops tonight. I'll let you get us started.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first workshop will be on pedestrian safety pilot project and new traffic calming program report, and we'll start with John Ferruzzi making the presentation, traffic and mobility manager.
Great. Good to see you, John.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor, members of council, good to see you. I'm here with Adam Lindt, our bicycle pedestrian coordinator, and we're here to present an update on our pilot projects from the pedestrian safety side of things as well as some recommendations to move forward with. Next. So, the last time we met and spoke about the subject, we were basically providing information about a pilot project and traffic calming in general. So, at the time, we had talked about the Old Town project as well as a project on West 57th Avenue where we tried traffic calming devices. And during that period, we basically collected some data, and now we have some results and recommendations. In relationship to that as well, we're going to be talking about a new traffic calming program that built upon the results of our pilot project. And we'll go over some information about the rules and regulations that we want to recommend as well as implementation examples and how we're going to move forward with the program. Next. So, the Old Town and West 57th Avenue pilot projects were initiated in early 2020 in January. And from there, we basically looked at addressing several of the citizen complaints that we had been receiving about 57th Avenue, about Old Town, about pedestrian safety, site distance, and we basically wanted to develop an alternative to what we hadn't been able to provide through our MUTCD and other kind of documents and regulations that we have around traffic engineering. So, there are no existing large funding sources available for addressing some of those requests. And West 57th Avenue has a connection to Old Town and to a school, park, food bank, businesses in the area as well as the residential neighborhood, so we wanted to make sure to address those. The other location where we wanted to pilot a project is right in the heart of Old Town on Grandview and Webster. And at that location, because of the G-line, we'd noticed a lot of pedestrian activity, heard about a lot of concerns related to safety, and taking the step to do something about it. Next. So, for example, here's the West 57th Avenue location where we have the before and after pictures of where we installed some of the improvements. These include what we call lighter, quicker, cheaper. These are paint, flexi-post, and other kind of quick treatments to get out there and shorten the crossing distance at crosswalks, make it more visible for drivers, help with highlighting some of the locations where people shouldn't park near the intersections to open up the site distances, site distance at the intersections. Next. As well as in Old Town, we had looked at the fading condition of the pavers at the crosswalk and updated it to a thermoplastic material that had some retroreflectivity and added planters to basically help with a deflection of vehicles and slowing down essentially of vehicles approaching the crosswalk. Next.
Yes, Ms. Ford.
John, before you go away from that picture of the Grandview and Webster?
Yeah.
Which box planter was, or were they all? There were four incidences where it got hit. Which one was that while we're looking at that picture?
Yeah, so, we have basically seen several of them hit, and they've been from different directions. The pattern, I would say with one of them specifically, is related to folks that are turning left off of Webster Street onto Grandview eastbound. And so, if a vehicle misjudged the turn, they would basically push the planter in the process of turning. And to mitigate that, we've actually, because they've been hit, and we'll talk a little bit more about our incident log, we've learned from that process to use circular planters instead of the square. It'll provide a little bit more room on that turning radius.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Next slide. Thanks, John. So, now, we're going to go over some of the survey results that we got from the public. We did this both on West 57th and in Old Town. So, we had a pre-installation survey period and then a post-installation survey period, and we'll do a little summary of both of those. Next slide. So, the first question was on the pre-installation, kind of asking what, if any, safety issues do you notice along West 57th? And the main ones were speeding, and that it's hard to see around parked cars, and some of those similar issues. So, kind of not anything new, but kind of reemphasize what we've heard from the public previously. Next slide. So, next, we asked, do you think if the new curb extensions pictured below, so this was after we did the installation with the paint and the flex post, improve this corridor? And about 89% of the respondents said yes. Next slide. So, another question we asked was, have you noticed any changes while traveling along West 57th since the curb extensions were installed? So, I think the top three responses were that driving speeds were slower, that it feels safer to walk, and that it's safer to cross the street. So, that was in line with what we were hoping these lighter, quicker, cheaper installations would do. Next slide. And lastly, you know, this is a pilot project in one area, but we wanted to get a feel if people thought this would be a benefit to the city in other areas, and about 85% of the respondents supported this moving to other areas of the city as well.
Mr. Marriott?
Let me ask you a question real quick. So, I see the, you know, you had some survey questions and survey results. One of the most important questions I think you could ask of people who either live there or drive through there all the time, the users of this area, is, do you like this? Or, did this make things better? Did you have any kind of survey questions based around that question? Because, you know, ask somebody, do you think this made things safer? They might say, yeah, I don't like it, but yeah, it probably made it safer because it made it so hard to get through. It slowed everybody down, but I don't like it, or I don't want it, but yeah, it probably made it safer.
Yeah, so, we did have another question that was asking more in line, like, are you happy with paint and flex posts? Or, would you like to see this made into concrete with real curb extensions? Or, people could say they don't want any of it at all. So, we got a few people that said they don't like it at all because, yeah, it slows them down. But a majority of the people said that they would actually want to see this made permanent with concrete instead of the paint and flexi-post. But during the process, we didn't get too much negative feedback about either the look or the general design of the corridor. I think people had some comments about over time, how they kind of wilted and got hit, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, about how we plan to make it look a little bit better if we move forward for the long term. But we didn't have any major negative response to the look or design.
So, I would, here's where I would encourage you to maybe rethink that part of it, or be careful, tread cautiously here. I've heard a number of comments about it, some positive, some negative, but saying your survey questions didn't generate any negative, or any negative to speak of, means you're not surveying people, either enough people or a broad enough spectrum of people, or surveying them accurately. Because I can tell you that the response to it is somewhat mixed, as you might expect. And if your survey's not picking that up, your survey's not accurate. You're not really asking the same thing. So, before you charge too far, I would try to really determine that. I mean, it's okay that this is something that has a mixed response. I would expect nothing less.
Right.
But we need to be able to accurately evaluate that, and having responses that don't reflect that isn't helpful. So, anyway, before, I would just encourage you to maybe take another look at that, because it's not everything sunny on 57th Avenue, you know what I mean?
Right, right. There was definitely detractors. Just our survey results had more supporters than detractors, not to say that everybody was super gung ho. Just the majority of the response that we received was more on the positive side.
Okay, well, again, I would encourage you to tread carefully there, because if the reality is, is that this is more negatively thought of than positively thought of, and we act upon it on information that isn't accurate, you know, there can be quite a bit of backlash from that. So, anyway, I would just encourage you to, you know, I'm happy to see these slides, but I can't believe that they're complete or accurate. So, anyway, just so you know.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
John, could you share some of the negative comments of having some plastic on the sides of the roads?
Yeah, so, there has been, from people who live right there, are, you know, problems with the RTD buses turning the corner at 57th and car, and the folks who are going the other way, the bus has to be in the oncoming lane to do that, and quite a bit of anxiety and angst about that. You know, a number of different things, and some of them clearly are people's just preference of like, look, I preferred it the way it was before. And so, I just think the survey should pick that up for, to really be properly evaluated. Those thoughts and those questions are out there, and so, they need to be properly evaluated. And at least, I understand, this is just a snapshot of your survey. This isn't complete, but we need to, the complete information needs to be reflected.
Right. So, the way I'd hear it is, there's adverse effects to it that might not be directly there at the crosswalk, is what I'm gathering, right? So, like, the bus has to turn wider, and that affected the street going down, not necessarily 57th?
Well, it affects 57th too, because the bus has to pull into the oncoming lane to make the corner. So, it's complaints from people driving down 57th, complaints from people driving down Car Street.
Car.
You know, things like that. Obviously, the buses don't turn every corner off of 57th Avenue, but there are certainly places.
Right.
And so, to me, I brought the question up just because from my neighbors and the people who live in that neighborhood, the response to this is mixed. Some positive, some very positive, some very negative, and a whole lot kind of in the middle. And I would expect survey results to kind of reflect that.
Okay. Next slide.
Ms. Ford, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Marriott is saying, because I believe your post-survey was only 19 people. And that would be good for a, you know, a, oh, I can't think of it now, a very quick study just to prepare for a survey, you know, to really get accuracy. You need about 400 people.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a limited sample size. But so, we're just trying to present those results that we did get, and I think before we made any major movements or improvements, that would also encourage a new engagement process through another design. So, touching base on Old Town, we did have more responses there, did the same pre and post kind of time period, and we'll just go through these results here. So, next slide, please. So, again, what if any traffic safety issues do you perceive in Old Town? So, the ones where mainly that people can't see around parked cars, that drivers don't yield to pedestrians at crosswalks, and that pretty much everybody, whether they're walking, biking, or driving, aren't on their best behavior when it comes to don't-walk signs, stop signs, and stoplights. So, in line with what we hear on a regular basis. Next slide. And so, another pre-installation question we asked was, do you think that the current brick crosswalks in Old Town are visible to drivers? And about 42% said, sorry, 42% said yes, and 57% said no. So, that was just a little test on the before and after of the thermoplastic replacements. Next slide. So, again, we asked a question about the intersection of Grandview and Webster before and after, and asked if you're walking, which design makes you feel more comfortable? Large majority said the after, with the new crosswalks and planters in there. Next slide. Again, we asked the same question, but in this case, if you were driving, which design makes you feel more comfortable? A little bit more even, but more people said that the after design made them more comfortable. Next slide. So, then, we asked if you've driven through the intersection after the new design was installed, do you find it easier to see people walking and biking? About half the respondents said yes, a quarter said no, a quarter said no change, and a quarter of the respondents hadn't driven through that intersection yet. Next slide. So, again, final question was, compared to the previous crosswalks, do you think that the new crosswalks improve visibility to drivers? And 96% said yes. So, those were the results that we kind of gathered through the survey. There's more detailed questions that were submitted, and we'd be happy to talk through those outside of this, but we just wanted to give a snapshot of some of the results and public feedback that we got through this process. So, next slide. So, I will turn it over to John to talk a little bit about the incident log.
So, yes, as part of our process, we also tracked the number of incidents related to the flexi-post, the paint, the planters, lighter, quicker, cheaper equipment that we put out there. And we did note that the planters had been hit a few times, and that some of the posts had been knocked down, and we had to replace those. In a couple of cases, we basically had vandalism and just dealt with that. But for the most part, we've been logging incidents where vehicles and people have been accidentally hitting the equipment. Next. So, from a maintenance perspective, which we were also evaluating these equipment from, we were basically wanting to make sure to address some of the issues. So, if the concern was that the posts were getting hit regularly and knocked loose, and we need to reattach, we've come up with a solution to anchor the asphalt, the base into the asphalt. Instead of using epoxy, we can use anchors for that kind of thing for more stability. For the planters being hit lightly after the initial installation and being pushed back into place, we installed reflective tape on the edges of the planters to make them more visible. When the paint fainted during the winter maintenance, we did check to see if there's a higher quality, longer-lasting paint, and there is. And that's what we'd use next time, basically, on this kind of a thing. And if there was any kind of significant crash or issue, which, there was one where someone mentioned that he took an evasive maneuver to avoid a critter in the road and hit the planters, in that case, we actually replaced the planters with the insurance of the person who hit that. Next. So, our recommendations here is to basically move forward with this, given the response that we've received from the public as well as the results that we're seeing, which is a little bit more safety and support around crosswalks. The first recommendation is to make the pilot project installations permanent, that we basically upgrade the paint and upgrade the flexi-post to make sure that they're going to last and look nice in the long run. And we would basically make some potential modifications to the design, especially with the RTD bus. But if that bus route two were to change, then we can kind of go back to the original design. It's something that we've been looking at and adjusting on the go. Another recommendation is to initiate a traffic calming program in the city. And basically, we're wanting to initiate a traffic calming zone along the one-mile areas in the G-line, and start with a pilot project in our mobility innovation zone and try this. And then, from there, to continue to collect data and try to basically see what can we learn from this process with the traffic calming program before it goes citywide outside of the G-line areas, and make sure that we learn from this process. So, on a related note, we just want to also mention that we've started a plan to look at West 57th Avenue as a corridor. Our bike master plan calls for a study of this corridor, and there are some specific issues as you get closer to Old Town where the roadway narrows, related to parking, the intersections, and that kind of thing. So, we're basically wrapping that into our process here with traffic calming, because they are related. Next.
Before you go on, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes. Yeah, you know, one thing to think of, and I wish we had the data when you talk about it, is two things. I wonder if, in the future, when you do these, could we do, like, speed studies first of what the traffic is before and after, and then pedestrian counts before and after when you introduce it? Just because, I mean, I don't know which process you use, but I'm wondering if better data would tell us that, you know, did our decision truly make a difference? If pedestrians feel safer, so they're actually using it now? And do speeds really go down? Because sometimes I feel it's anecdotal. Maybe it's not. I don't know. I'll look to you. But, you know, there's stuff you could put out there just to monitor that, and there's technology that will count people that, you know, cross and blue toads to track speeds. If you could do that, I'd just be curious if they're beneficial. Because if they're not, then we shouldn't leave them there. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Do the temporary, and that's the only thing that, it's kind of like the chicanes, you know, the famous chicanes we did on, what's that? 56?
West 52nd. We all know where it is. I know exactly where it is.
We all know where it is.
West 52nd, west of Garrison, and between Garrison and Independence. And I believe one day you guys will let me forget this, but probably not for a while.
Not until you retire.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think that we should have known, like, real data around that, like, what was the true problem versus just a few complaints, and then did it address it? So, that's the only thing I would ask, is if we do just a little bit more study around it with some data before.
Well, I think we saw that, and I think it was in, was it in this week's weekly memo that you had the picture of that, exactly the kind of equipment you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. We are actually going.
Meovision.
Yeah. We're definitely going down that path. We actually did have a camera trailer that we put out with this, and it was going to read a radar, a speed radar sign. But unfortunately, the footage was corrupt in the study that we did on that. Camera trailer has a hard drive issue. So, we did replace it with another technology that we intend to use with these for sure. I think that's a very valuable tool, and especially the speed studies that we did do, those were something that we plan to pair up with this using new equipment.
I'm sure somebody at CDOT can help you if you're ever interested in doing that. And oh, by the way, the street is up there on the presentation. I just realized it. With the chicanes.
Right, Ms. Ford?
I'm back to the planter. I wanted to ask you, is there any data on color as far as how color affects whether people, you know, steer away or drive into it? You mentioned shape.
Yeah, I think, so, for the reflective material that we add to the edges of the planters, it does seem to help with people being a little bit more cautious approaching it. But in the cases where folks were turning and pushing them basically in the process of turning, I think they were just misjudging the gap. So, they saw the planter, but they didn't understand how to take the turn in that process. So, whether the planter's a different color, or, you know, different than what it currently is, wouldn't have made a difference.
So, lime green wouldn't, or orange?
Yeah. We, in fact, added signs to the planters on the approach as well that are for a pedestrian crossing, which are neon yellow signs, and, you know, they're visible. But, yeah, they still occasionally got hit.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Marriott?
So, I have a question about your last slide where it talks about the recommendations to make the project installations permanent. So, my, I would have thought with a pilot program, what you're trying to find out is what works and what didn't work. And other than a potential modification at Car Street to allow more easily for buses, if buses continue to go there, I don't see anything where there's any lesson learned, like, this didn't work, this worked, this didn't work. It looks like everything just worked. We got it 100%, hit it out of the park on the first swing, and so, we're good, we're just going to continue forward. I would have thought on a pilot program, we'd have learned some things along the way and are more permanent, and I realize these aren't permanent, but our more permanent installations may have had some lessons learned along the way that then we did some things different. Or, we went to a phase two where we're going to try these intersections in a little bit different configuration so we can evaluate what works best. Can you speak on that about, you just got it right, or?
Yeah, so, Bruce, if you can go back one or two slides to our maintenance, yes, okay. Yeah, that slide, please. So, this is part of the process, the slide here, where we basically have been tracking these live and trying to figure out, you know, what are the specific issues, especially with, in the winter with plows and, you know, our maintenance crews operating and using these as well, but also from the public perspective about, you know, how people feel about these. We posted a number of ways people can contact us. We had stickers that had QR codes on them in the park areas where these were installed, as well as Speak Up and our social media push around this. But in the process, what we noticed was that with the questions we were asking in the survey about, would you make this a permanent installation, and as Adam pointed out, the, you know, concrete alternative, we thought that was basically a very good indicator of this is a good direction that we're headed. Now, with the minor kind of issues and the log, the incident log that we've had, yes, we would make adjustments. We would secure them a little differently than we had before. We would change the radius on some of those intersection designs. But for the most part, we were getting positive feedback. So, our lessons learned are more related to maintenance at this point.
Yeah, right. Yeah, to me, it looks like the lessons learned are kind of the mechanics of doing it, but the, seems to me that there are no lessons learned around the shape of them, or the prominence of them, or the, you know, where they should be. It's just, how should we attach it, or how should, what should we paint it with? Not, how much should we paint it? Should it be bigger? Should it be smaller? Any of those things. And I guess I'm a little surprised at that, that we don't, you know, in a pilot program, you might have pushed the envelope to see how far you could go, or some, you know, just something, it seems like there might be, you know, or we, I think back to the chicanes on West 52nd Avenue. At the time, they thought that was the right thing, and over time, they learned a lesson that should have been maybe a little different than it was. It appears like with these, we didn't learn any, there were no lessons that shouldn't have been any different than it was, so we got it right. Or, is there any lessons to be learned, like, it should have been a little different, or?
Yeah, so, we were ready to, as a lighter, quicker, cheaper tool, to, you know, remove these if basically we got complaints.
Reconfigure or something.
Reconfigure them if, you know, it was a problem. And we didn't have any indication that that is the case. So, we proceeded with it, in the same kind of design that we had. In the process, there were, again, some maintenance-related issues that we noted, but nothing else.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess my reaction to that would be one of, you know, I know you guys put a lot of thinking and planning before you put these in place, and so, for it to work right is what we would have expected, and it worked. I mean, that's my perspective. And then, in terms of, you know, to be able to test different formats or installation types or things, you almost need to have multiple spots to try the different ones to see what works best or whatever, and that's not what this pilot program was about. It was really much more isolated to.
Yeah, we targeted the intersections on 57th Avenue, and a couple of them had access points to Wolf Park, and, you know, they were a little bit different in terms of their configuration versus, say, at the intersection where the school's located, Balsam and stuff. So, kind of comparing locations, we picked them this way to kind of see if this is the right approach for sure.
Right. Mr. Jones, I can't see you to see whether or not you have any questions or issues you would like to raise.
No, I don't have any questions or issues. I appreciate the questions of my fellow council members.
Very good. Ms. Ford?
Well, I wanted to compliment you, because I actually like this concept of testing, and then if it works or doesn't work, then you change it, and then you go for what's going to work, and then do it permanently. And I like that, because I think every corner, every area is going to be different. It's going to have its own issues, and you're probably going to make adjustments at some point for all those different variables that you're going to see in those different intersections.
Yeah.
So, I think it's kind of a smart idea. I like the fact that you're going to look to do it with the residents, too. I think, I think be prepared to get a lot of comments, though, because I know I get a lot of comments about this very thing.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Speeding.
And of course, I think that's kind of part of the process to make sure we do get those comments, and while we test drive things. We were using Speak Up, we were using kind of our social media channel, we're using, again, the QR codes on the spot right at the crosswalks to get people's attention. We actually welcome that. That's part of the process.
Well, we make your job fun, because we're all seven traffic engineer experts up here. So, okay, anything else?
Bruce, let's go to the slide that we left off at. Okay, so, the next part of this is really to launch a traffic calming program, and this is also where we take this a step further and start to look at, you know, we talked about what is traffic calming previously. about what is traffic calming previously, and what, what could be the program rules and regulations, and we, we said we would come back with some information about what other cities are doing, and how we can take from, from their lessons learned and goals, and, and begin to craft our own kind of a program here. So, just a reminder that, and, and you'll see in this picture here, traffic calming is kind of a retrofit to existing streets, where in this case, for example, there's a traffic circle added at an intersection, which by the way, also has stop control for the side streets, and then also between this traffic circle and the signalized intersection ahead, there is a speed bump. And so, with these speed bumps, speed humps, and, and different tools, it's a matter of using physical design elements to keep drivers at or under the speed limit, to make more people comfortable walking and biking, reduce the risk of serious crashes, and reduce high, high volumes and cut through traffic on neighborhood streets. And so, there's basically two elements to traffic calming and, and the options that we have. One is more of the speed management, and the other one is more of the volume management on, on the streets. Multiple treatments can be combined together on, on the roadways to be utilized together, and our focus primarily is on speed management, given that that's the cause of serious injury and fatalities, especially related to bicyclists and pedestrians. Next. So, for example, here are some other examples from, from outside the city of Barbado, where traffic calming designs have been implemented to the street, and they either involve horizontal deflections or vertical deflections, where a driver would basically experience something more tactile along the roadway, and tend to slow down as a result of that. Next.
Thanks, John. So, as we were developing our, our program rules, we looked at the surrounding jurisdictions, both locally and nationally, to see what they were doing, how they set their limits for speed limit, for kind of what constitutes speeding, what makes something eligible for a traffic calming program. So here's just some of the places that we had looked at surrounding the area. Next slide. And then, just to reiterate, our, our traffic calming pilot project zone is within this one-mile radius of the G Line stations, so targeted here, where there's the most development, where there's density, where there's connections to transit, before we would expand this to the rest of the city. Next slide. So, to get into our program rules, these are the criteria that we're recommending. Only streets that are local, minor collector or collector are eligible for traffic calming, maximum speed limit of 30 miles an hour. When we conduct a traffic study, that 85th percentile has to be at least seven miles per hour or over. If it's four or five, it's not really considered a, a major speeding issue, where we'd want to make a heavy investment, and that the traffic volumes are between 500 and 10,000 vehicles per day. And for our process, we have two options, one that's a resident petition, so that we're responding to resident issues and complaints, and then one that is city-initiated or led. Next slide. So you guys have a more detailed description of our process, I'm gonna try and go through this at a high level, and then if there's questions, we'd be happy to answer those. So for the resident-initiated process, step one is that a resident says, hey, there's people speeding on my block, and we want them to at least get 25% of the households on that block to sign the petition, so that if the city's gonna go out there and put effort, we know that there's already some support for this, and it's not just one resident thinking it's an issue, and the rest of the neighbors would never support anything. So if there is, you know, we'll conduct that traffic study, make sure that it's a local minor collector or collector, see what the volumes are, and that the speeds are to meet that seven-plus threshold. So, if it doesn't qualify, that's kind of the end of the process under the traffic calming program. If it does qualify, but it's more than 1,000 ADT, it'll switch to a city-led process, which our thinking is basically that the street carries more traffic than just the neighborhood, a neighborhood collector or a neighborhood service, so it's affecting a greater population, so we wanna do, have more time to do more study, and then kind of lead that process ourselves. But if it does fall within that 500 to 1,000 ADT range, we'd hold an initial public meeting to kind of inform the neighborhood about the traffic calming program, what the options are, and what the result of that study was, and then continue to step four on the next slide. So at our, you know, first meeting's kind of a general introduction to this is the program, and then at the second meeting, the city would come back with a traffic calming plan, whether that's one device, two devices, three devices, depending on what the issues are and the length of the street. And at this point, we would distribute support forums to the residents on that block, or the blocks that have devices that would be directly affected. And based on the support forums and feedback, if there's less than 75% support, we wouldn't be able to move forward with that, that would kind of end the process, and if there was 75% support or greater, we would move that project to final design, and then into construction, and then evaluation to make sure it's functioning as anticipated. So that's kind of how our resident process works, and next slide, we can talk about the city process. So this is whether the city knows that there's an issue, we've been getting complaints over the years, we've done studies for another variety of reasons and found out that there's a speeding issue, or if it's a resident-initiated process, and that ADT is over 100 or not on a local street, the city would kind of then take over. So same second step, as we review the process, as we review the street, conduct a traffic study to make sure it qualifies. Again, if it doesn't, that's kind of the end of the process. If it does, we'll hold a public meeting to provide the results on the study, and also at this time, we prevent, present a traffic calming plan. Since the city's kind of leading this, we're more in control of the timing and the process, and we can kind of combine those first two meetings into one at, at this level. So, that's a little bit of a difference between the city-led and the resident-initiated. Another difference is if there's, you know, general support for the plan, then we would continue to move forward. If there's some support, but some consternation, and we don't feel like everybody's on board, we would go back and kind of take that feedback to adjust that plan, and come back at a second public meeting to present a new option. Say, we propose speed humps or chicanes, but everybody was against chicanes, we could come back a second time and propose speed humps or another option that could meet the goal, because everybody's still supporting traffic calming, they're just not on board with the first kind of plan and devices that we would use. Next slide. So at that point, you know, we come back with a second plan, reach out to the community again, hold a public meeting, and if at that point, we still can't gather enough support to move forward, it's kind of the end of the process. But if we do get enough support on that second plan, we would say, we'll go ahead and move that to final design and construction, and both levels, again, the last step is evaluation. So we want to make sure that as we continue to grow and develop the program over time, that the devices that we choose and the locations that we choose are working correctly, and, and as we can continue to grow and make changes to improve the program. Next slide. So, go through these examples quickly. So this is a local street, speed limit 25, there's 17 houses on the block, if a resident wants to initiate a process, 25% of that is more than four houses, so we need them plus four houses to say, we think there's an issue, we want the city to do something. Next step, the city would conduct a speed and volume study on, on that street, and let's say that there's 625 cars, and 85th percentile is 33 miles per hour, which is eight over, so it meets both thresholds. We would continue through the process, make a recommendation, let's say maybe a speed hump in the middle to slow people down from reaching that max speed, and then we would need at least 13 homes to agree on that plan for implementation. Next slide. Another example here, it's a local street, 25 miles per hour, oddly, there's only three homes on this frontage. Resident thinks there's an issue, so they actually make up 25% or more, so that kind of qualifies themselves in this, on this street. We would conduct a speed study, and if we find out that the average daily traffic is 2,000 and the speeding is 35, it meets that seven-over threshold, but it's above the 1,000 threshold, so it would go away from a resident process to a city-led process, because it's more likely that this street is serving a greater importance in the transportation network. And then we would move forward with the traffic calming plan. Next slide. And our last example is here, you know, we have a collector's street, it's 25 miles an hour, the resident contacts the city, but since it's already a collector's street, no petitions required, it kind of automatically moves into that city-led process from the get-go. We conduct a speed study, find that there's 3,100 ADT, and the speed is 30 miles per hour. So it's only five miles per hour over the speed limit, it doesn't meet the criteria under this traffic calming program. So, you know, we would work with PD and maybe put out a speed radar sign, something that's of the lighter, quicker, cheaper variety to still address the issue, but not to the point that we'd make a big design and, and capital project implementation at this location. So that is the end of our examples. If anybody has any quick questions, otherwise, we can continue.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I just have a quick question about your process. Do you, and, and this may be a question for Mr. Devon as much as you guys, but do you anticipate if, if we were to adopt something like that, any limitations about how, how many of these you would consider at any one time? I can picture that if this were widely noticed throughout neighborhoods, I know as a council member, it's the most frequent thing I deal with, is people complaining about either speeding or traffic, or, you know, all kinds of different things in their neighborhood, that you might have 100 requests right off the bat, and obviously, we have capacity to stay within, we don't have the ability to, to do a ton. So, how would you handle that part of the process?
Yes, the, the initial step is gonna be kind of the, the crazy Wild West one until it calms down. I think our initial kind of thought is to take it first come, first served, obviously funding depending, so, you know, we might try and say, maybe we'll do five a year, and, and that's kind of capacity for staff to, to initiate what funding can handle, and then we would kind of have a running list. In the past, I think some of the speed studies that we've done, when we've got people complaining, we do them, and they don't actually meet this threshold, so some of them would get knocked down off of that list. And then we also have requirements, if it was like a lot of people in a corridor, or in the same area, there's kind of some spacing requirements that would keep them from being, like, every block, there would be a speed hump, because a new group of people said that there was speeding on their section. So, it's kind of gonna be a little bit of a wait and see, but I think we'll probably put a limit on the number that we, as staff, can handle. The funding issue, we'll, we'll kind of cut down on some of that, and then our criteria will help down as, you know, that 500 threshold will help keep a lot of smaller streets off of, off of the program, so.
Maybe I can have something?
Sure.
So, Councilmember Marriott, also, when we are going through the process, the flowchart, if a street doesn't qualify, and they don't have enough support from the residents, or for whatever reason, it, it, the process ends, we've added that we wouldn't come back and do anything in terms of a traffic study and another look at that location until two years after that time period. So, as Adam pointed out in the, in the beginning, we anticipate a lot of requests, and we're gonna keep a running list, but once that is looked at, and traffic studies are, are collected, and information data is collected, I anticipate it's gonna slow down quite a bit, until we kind of get into a habit of five or six per year. That's, that's what we anticipate, from our colleagues, also touching base with them from, from across the region as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is David, I have a quick question.
You bet. Mr. Jones?
And this may have already been discussed, and I apologize if I missed it, but with regard to the funding, could you just say one more time how the funding would be established, and where would that funding come from for this project?
Funding? Yeah, we're gonna be covering that here in, in the next slide.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
You just teed it up, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Perfect. You can see I haven't gone ahead in this, in the presentation, though.
That's right.
Next slide. Yes, so, as part of our process, we're also considering how to fund this. We, we are going through the two-year budget cycle request for this and our own internal process. Our concept here is that we would basically have this pilot project funded and, and try it out initially to see how it works, and then from there, have a, an annual operating budget to operate from, for, for traffic calming throughout the city. So, in terms of funding, there, there are a number of things that we are working with within our process, our budget process internally here. So, the pilot program, and the pilot program connection to this and the goals really is to learn from what we had placed out in the community for the past several months, and try to address the interests that the public has related to speeding concerns, and what the city can do something about. We, we feel that through a traffic calming program, we would be able to address the most significant speeding issues and concerns with design elements on our roadways and retrofits, especially where we have neighborhoods that were established in the 50s or in older neighborhoods, and now have changed in character and need some updates and upgrades. And the pro, the process and the program is designed to engage and gather public support, which I think is also a very important part of the process. We sometimes have gone out with our traffic, our MUTCD and traffic regulations and, and guidelines, and the public doesn't always necessarily understand and appreciate those engineering-type responses when we, when we bring in that kind of information, so we want to have an alternate of something to, to help them feel heard, and provide some kind of tools to mitigate the issues. And then, our goal is really to focus on the one-mile area of the G Line stations, and help this as part of another process that we're going through related to micro-mobility and bike-ped access and safety around the G Line stations. That's really the key in, in utilizing this in this particular location. So, as part of our process, we will have an evaluation in, in the 85th percentile speed, and we anticipate that the, that this will eliminate regular calls for the police enforcement related to speeding on corridors. We feel that there would be basically positive, positive support from the community related to the process, engagement and results, and that on a technical side, it would reduce crashes at intersections, given that safety and speeds are correlated to each other. And ultimately, our goal is to improve the safety and comfort for bicyclists and pedestrians along corridors that especially connect to the transit stations. We want to encourage bicycle and pedestrian access to transit. Next. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take your questions.
Any final questions from council? Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
You know, I had heard so many people say that they just wanted a stop sign on Webster, and I know that that was not encouraged, and can you tell me again why? And also, you know, I'm kind of sitting here thinking, you know, would it have been easier and less expensive just to put up a stop sign versus all the other? So, could you just speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So for, for, the, the most common request actually is for, for a stop sign, and we hear that quite often. The process to install stop signs is identified through warrants in the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is a federal document, and if an intersection doesn't meet warrants, and there are nine of them, that they could potentially meet, but if they don't meet it, we couldn't install stop signs. Installing a stop, stop sign means that if there is a crash coming out of that situation, that basically there's a liability and fault assigned at that point. And we, we basically wanted to make sure that safety is, is our focus of anything that we do. In most cases, when stop signs are requested, the issue is speeding, and that's not what stop signs are meant to, to do, that's not their purpose. And in most cases, the, the, the request for them is to stop traffic on the major roadway. And usually, the, the way that works is that the major movement in an intersection, which has the majority of traffic, gets the right-of-way, and the minor movement, the side streets, are the ones that are under stop control. So, people requesting, you know, stopping traffic on a major road causes also congestion as well. Yeah.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Mr. Devon, do you need any further direction from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, I want to check to make sure that we answered Councilmember Jones's question on funding?
Um, no, but I figured I could just follow up at another time.
Okay, all right. The, I, I guess the only thing I want to add is that if, if we, if we kind of really pay attention to the voice of the customer, John mentioned that, that speeding, I think Nancy, well, I think all of you, I've dealt with speeding issues at one time or another in, in, in terms of representing your constituents and districts and so forth and so on, and we've never really had an organized program, an organized way of looking at this. You know, what we've often relied on is we'll try to get more speed enforcement out there, we'll, we'll do a, a, a traffic, a speed study, a volume count, we'll get a temporary road sign out there, but what these gentlemen are doing is trying to figure out a way that we could have a programmed response and a system for considering those responses, and looking at ways of trying to install improvements that will calm traffic down. And this is, in my opinion, exactly what we need in many areas. And this is, in my opinion, exactly what we need in many areas of our community. Funding it to the degree that we're going to need it at some point in time, if it becomes popular, is certainly going to be a challenge. But frankly, it's a challenge I'm looking forward to us taking on in order to help address a lot of the concerns we hear from citizens in neighborhoods all over the community.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Now we'll move on to the shared parking agreement for Old Town Transit Hub.
John, is that going to be you again?
Yes.
John Ferruzzi again will introduce this item.
Hello again. I'm John Ferruzzi, the manager of Mobility and Planning Innovations.
Could you use a different mask this go around? You know, each time just do.
I'm here with my colleagues, Andrew Vador and with Derek Fern. And they're going to introduce themselves when their sides come up here. I just wanted to kick off this with a little background on the topic.
Great.
Next. So before I turn it over to Andrew, we are wanting to basically talk about the transit hub as it relates to the parking management strategy in Old Town. And we're going to go through a number of piece of information, some that we've brought to you previously that we've shared and provide to you some additional information about the transit hub and dive a little deeper on that particular subject. Andrew?
Thank you, John. Good evening, I'm Andrew Vador with Walker Consultants. I'm our Director of Planning. It's good to be here with you, Mr. Mayor, council and city leadership and staff. Last time we spoke was a couple of months ago when we introduced this topic. We're trying to develop a good strategy for managing the parking in the hub. And I think it's important to start with why good parking management principles are necessary for the success of managing the hub effectively as well as parking in Old Town. We need to provide equity for all. And when we say equity for all, we mean all the different parker types. So that's going to be riders of the G Line, riders of the RTD bus system, employees working in Old Town as well as the customers and visitors to Old Town. So we want to make sure that everybody has a place to park in the way that is best suited for them to park. Good parking management practices helps enforce and encourage good economic development within Old Town. It can also help to fund the operating of the system, the parking system, not only at the hub but in Old Town. It reduces people cruising. Now cruising's okay when we're just trying to show off our cars. But when we're trying to find a place for people to park quickly and effectively, we want to get them into their parking spot and then get them onto the business of why they're visiting the hub and the areas around Old Town. It improves the customer experience. If you think about the customers that are coming to the hub or coming into Old Town, we want to make that experience good for them so they come back and not go to somewhere else in the front range to do their shopping or their dining or their business. We also want to make sure that we're not overbuilding parking and spending money unnecessarily for assets and making sure that it's right sized so we can get everywhere we need to go quicker. And then growth in the front range in an Old Town and the city has certainly changed. You know, in 2016, when we were first here talking to you about parking management principles, the growth wasn't what it has been previous years leading up to this. So the needs in the front range are changing. Next slide, please. Parking can be managed in a lot of different ways. And the way Old Town and the hub manages parking is going to be different from that of your other neighboring communities, the front range or places outside of Colorado in whole. And that can be done through paid parking, it can be done through time limits, variable parking rates, travel demand management, transportation and management, and encouraging good on-street turnover. What's right for you and what's right for the hub may not be right for others. And so the plan that we have in place is specific to address the needs of your community as well as the needs of the hub. Next slide, please. We want to review some existing conditions and I'll turn it over to Derek to go through that.
Good evening, council. I'm Derek Fern. I am the Travel Demand Management and Parking Coordinator for the city. And I'm happy to be talking with you today. Nice to meet you all. And I'm here to talk about the existing management strategies from what Andrew mentioned of the 2016 study currently within the Old Town Transit Hub. Next slide. So currently, this map illustrates the purple there on the bottom is the bottom 400 stalls that are designated to RTD parking only. So that includes the bus riders as well as the G Line. And they are noted by signs, so levels one through three is RTD only with a 30-day maximum. All RTD travelers and commuters must register their vehicles by their plates and they are given the option of a 12 or a 24-hour parking session. And then on the third and fourth, well, the second half of that third level and the fourth level is Old Town visitor parking where they have a four-hour limit as well as employees park that work in Old Town that apply for a permit through our permit process. Next slide, please. So currently, the way that it is set up, overnight parking is permitted, as mentioned on the previous slide, for RTD commuters and rail users. Basically, they can park up to 30 days as long as they register their vehicle every day for that 24-hour maximum period. That's per RTD standards. And then there is no overnight parking on the upper levels for the visitors and employees. So because of that difference, it can be a little confusing on occasion to people that go to park within the hub. And it is very centralized, localized to signage to say this is for RTD, this is for Old Town. So it's very segregated, very separated. And with those different rules, like I said, it can be confusing, but also it's a gateless garage. So as you go to downtown, you're going to see a lot of gates. The way this garage was built, it's with license plate reader technology. So it captures your plate on the way in, matches that to a registration. And it is therefore, at that point, given to Laz and Laz is enforcing and patrolling in that garage as well.
Mr. Marriott.
I just have a quick question for you on the existing condition here. You know, one of the things that I've thought all along with Old Town there is that what I want to see happen is that if a patron of an establishment in Old Town has too much to drink and makes the correct decision, which is to have a friend take him home or take an Uber or take a Lyft, but their car is on the top level, you know, they did everything right. They pulled into the top level of the parking hub, they parked there, they registered their car, and then they made the right decision that they had consumed too much alcohol to drive home at this point. So I'm going to make the right decision and do something else. What are we doing with that situation at the moment? I mean, I would hate to have somebody have the, as they're walking out of an establishment saying, "Well, I should probably take an Uber home, but I don't want to have to get, you know, I don't want to be towed or I don't want a ticket. I'm probably okay." You know, I don't want that thing to influence them making a good decision.
Yes, and I agree with you 100%. And currently, I mean, Laz doesn't work 24 hours a day. So they're not there overnight to necessarily check. I know that APD does go through there just to make sure that there's no funny business going on and that, you know, everything is secured. But at this point in time, we're not necessarily enforcing. So that's again, kind of part of what we're trying to work out here.
Right, okay. And do we know, have we looked often enough to know, is that exact situation happening or is it not really a concern or not really happening? Are cars there overnight?
On occasion, but it's not, it's not very frequent. So it hasn't been an issue of concern up to this point.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And at this point, I believe I turn it back over to Andrew. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
We believe that data-driven decisions help inform good policy and procedures in our studies. And so we wanted to share some information with you about the utilization of the parking in the hub. Now this is pre-COVID information. This is from the summer and fall and into December of 2019. And this slide shows a lot of information. I just want to highlight a couple of things. During the daytime, there's about 225 parking spaces that are empty. So available space for customers to park in that garage. That's important because that means the garage is not overutilized and there's capacity to put more vehicles in there. The distribution, though, is that most of the parking spaces that are currently assigned to RTD, those 400 spaces, about 85% of them are being parked in per the current distribution of RTD spaces and city-owned spaces, leaving an adequate amount of parking available on Level 4 of the garage for customers and employees within Old Town. Next slide. The story changes on the weekend. There's obviously a lot more availability in that garage and that has a lot to do with the demand for RTD use on the weekend goes down again pre-COVID. Only about 23% of those 400 spaces are utilized. So there's adequate opportunity to be able to put additional vehicles in the garage, both weekday and weekend. And putting these parking management strategies in place helps support that information from this data. Next slide, please.
Before you go to that, post-COVID, I assume we've seen a pretty dramatic drop in the use of RTD spaces?
We have not analyzed that data, but anecdotally, yes. The reality is that garage is probably pretty empty right now. We are tracking, I will say as a firm, those trends and the rebounds of that. Transit use is likely going to be one of those uses that's going to take some time to recover until people have the confidence to get back into closed confined spaces. And mass transit is not only buses and rail, but air travel as well.
Right.
A couple of more statistics here that I think are important to share. This has to do with duration of stay and the length that people are occupying not only the city's top-level spaces, but as well as the RTD spaces. The graph on the top shows that the length of stay of greater than 24 hours over the second and third and fourth quarter of last year is dropping. But the average length of stay for the city-owned spaces is increasing. Next slide. This information here is good data. It's suggesting that the compliance of the rules that are in place, not only for the city-owned spaces, but the RTD spaces is going up. And that this declining trend here in this graph shows that the number of offenders that are not following the rules are going down. I think that has a lot to do with the lessons that your parking operator Laz and the city staff are teaching people about what the policies are and what the procedures are. So that's working well. That's something that we want to see continue. Education before enforcement increases the compliance rates a lot quicker. When people know what the plans are and what the rules are, they'll typically follow them a lot sooner. Next slide, please. Next slide. Want to talk a bit about peer benchmarking and what others are doing in the front range. Again, a lot of data here. We looked at a number of different transit-serving facilities within the front range, some city-owned or municipality-owned, some RTD-owned. What we're showing here and comparing is the parking rate structures of the other agencies around the front range. By and large, most of these facilities are operating either free or under standard RTD rate structures. Obviously, the hub is currently free. There are only two facilities outside of RTD standard rates, which we'll talk about in a second, that are currently operating is paid. One is I-Lift in Aurora and the second is Boulder Junction. I should note that Boulder Junction is the least like any of these other transit-serving facilities within the front range because Boulder Junction serves a lot of downtown urban parking where the parking adjacent to it is currently paid. Next slide, please. For those that are not familiar, oh, we lost that slide. But the RTD rates are if you're an in-district customer, basically your first 24 hours are free. After that, it's $2 a day. If you're an out-of-district parker, it's $4 per day to park, just to re-familiarize yourself with that. This slide is a representation of RTD ridership across the district. Aside from the I-25 and Broadway corridor, which has the highest riderships of both rail and bus, what we're showing here in the box circled in yellow is the ridership of Old Town. You'll see that you are in the upper quartile of ridership, which means a lot of people that are getting on the G Line or the bus and RTD is higher than most of the other municipal agencies that we surveyed. So you do have a lot of transit ridership here at the station. I think that shows a lot of optimism and that the station is used highly. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to John.
So as part of our process, what we had agreed to with RTD was to go through a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, for the initial 18 months of the G Line running and tracking the data from the transit hub. And in that process, we were going to basically reconvene and look at the data and make decisions for the IGA. The MOU is set to expire in September of this year. And therefore, we're headed towards establishing an IGA with RTD, but utilizing the data, utilizing the study that we've conducted to help inform what the transit hub should look like in the future. Next slide. So with that, we have basically been wanting to do, take an approach that is a data-driven approach where we look at what do the public perceive and when do they start to perceive it as occupied and try to help with that perception. Part of the issue is that some of the capacity issues with the RTD parking spaces, which as Andrew noted earlier, they were in a higher capacity compared to the city-owned spaces, that there is a potential for that to spill over once it starts to get maxed out essentially on that capacity. Next slide. And therefore, in the process, we wanted to compare ourselves to the region and identify how to align ourselves with the other transit management or parking management strategies at the transit stations within the region. And in some cases, with regard to paid and unpaid, some of the structures that RTD has is that it's initially free, but then it's still paid in the long run. So there is a strategy behind the RTD process as well. And we currently don't have either of those. We've kept it free this entire time. Next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to recommendations.
Thank you, John. Next slide, please. So I think it's important to recognize that as we start going through the recommendations, going from the MOU to the IGA, we're putting the tools in place for when it's time to implement some of these recommendations. Some of them immediate and some of them in the future, that the tools are in place between the city and RTD with that IGA. So if and when a certain scenario occurs, the city can then take action on them without having to go back to council, to city leadership or RTD to negotiate those changes. So a lot of these things are set for the future and not necessarily now. One of the things that you've been doing, well, a good job of, is tracking utilization and monitoring how the hub is being used and who's using it. We think that's important to be able to continue to do on an ongoing basis. Things will change, the trends will change. And having a good baseline of data now, which you do, is going to be important to watch what happens in the future. So please continue to do that. We know that you are currently tracking parking demand, not only in the hub, but in the parking lots in Old Town and on-street. Continue to do that because as you have a broader parking management strategy, get put in motion for Old Town, it can be worked together with the hub. We can't operate these two things independently. We do know that there are some confusion points for customers related to the signage in the hub. And so we want to improve that signage and wayfinding. We'll talk about those specifics in a minute. We talked about education and education being important to the customers. Continue that education so as the rules and policies change, no one's surprised about it. Have a good PR campaign in place. Use the different channels you have to reach your customers to share the information about those changes. We know that the license plate technology that's in the garage is having some challenges right now. Continue to work through those so the reliability and consistency of those plate reads goes up and you have more confidence in that. And then continue, you know, as you go into an educate and enforcement period, make sure that there's some notice that we're going to go from a soft enforcement to from a soft enforcement to a hard enforcement of some of these policies. Next slide, please. So the specific rate recommendations that we have to put into that IGA, again, these are to have the tools in place, is to use a fee structure that has trigger points, and you can balance the utilization of that garage. So we talked about that 85% utilization in the RTD spaces. That's one of those trigger points that we believe is an appropriate time to be able to implement paid parking. And the reason is, is we can manage behaviors more effectively when we reach higher capacity. If we were to say, well, should we do that tomorrow? The answer is obviously no. If we walked out there, you know, any day over the last three months or probably in the three months leading forward, we know that utilization is not going to be there. So it's going to take sustained occupancy in the garage to get back to that point. We recommend a flat daily rate system similar to what's being used elsewhere in the region that's familiar and consistent. So $2 a day to be consistent with most of the other RTD facilities that are charging to park, as well as the Eye Lift Station in Aurora. So anyone that's riding transit in the front range or coming to Old Town, maybe that doesn't live in this area specifically, is going to understand the familiarity with location to location. So we talked about starting along with that $2 a day rate. We might want to make some changes to the employee permits and the employee permit pricing for those that park more than four hours, to be consistent with that. We do want to allow overnight parking. Mr. Marriott, to your concerns earlier. And we want it to be consistent garage-wide. So no matter who you are parking in the garage, we talked about that equity for all. There's not confusion about who I am versus another parker and the policies. As utilization increases in the garage, garage-wide, we have some trigger points in place that would tell us when we need to increase the rates, as well as when we need to decrease the rates if and when utilization drops to encourage those that may be parking elsewhere along other G Line stations to come back to the Old Town hub garage. And then also being able to have temporary fee adjustments in places for when there are events serving Old Town so we're not negatively impacting customers' behaviors for disencouraging them for coming to Old Town. Next slide, please. So here's some other specific recommendations to consider. We recommend uninstalling the user group allocation signs throughout the hub and no longer differentiate between where the RTD parkers are and where Old Town parkers are and employees are. The reason is, is the garage has capacity to support additional parkers. And as such, we can take some of the confusion out of who those different parkers are and just let them park in any one of the 600 spaces of the garage. We want to be able to allow public parkers to utilize those RTD spaces outside of the traditional peak daytime RTD parking hours. So in the evening, if you as a parker want to park on the ground floor, for whatever reason, there's nothing prohibiting you from doing that because those spaces are largely unoccupied. No more than a couple hundred cars in there. So take some of that differentiation out. And again, because we don't have a capacity problem, meaning there's parking spaces available, we don't have to be as restrictive. But it's important to still, along the way, continue to monitor the parking utilization and utilize the technology as you have with the LPR readers and with the app, self-registering to monitor how many people are parking in there. So if you need to make adjustments over time, you have the data already in place to be able to make those changes. Next slide, please. We'll move on to discussion and next steps and then wrap it up with questions. So I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Andrew. So in terms of discussion and next steps, you know, the question is where do we go from here? And what we're planning to do here is to provide you with information to hopefully familiarize you with the plan for the transit hub. This is something that we've been coordinating with RTD as well, as well as the RTD board. And the plan is supportive of RTD transit and transit ridership, while at the same time, the goal is to improve the user experience on the Arvada side. And so when folks arrive at the garage, we can have a better experience. We can offer them a better experience for parking at any level that they want, regardless of, you know, what situation they're in. If they want to use one of the floors in the grand floor, near bus kiosk, or go towards the top floor, towards Old Town, they would be free to do so. So to get there, basically, we're going to have, we're going to present an IGA to city council for review and hopefully approval. And that IGA is coming from a review process that we went through with RTD. We're planning to simplify the transit hub signage for a shared parking agreement. And we will improve our website as well. We've been taking steps to help communicate the changes. We've done this before with compliance and received some good feedback. We're going to use that same process. And ultimately, we're going to monitor the transit hub in Old Town to see what these occupation levels and what the occupancy looks like. Ultimately, if everything is going well, we're wanting to have a robust public communication plan to start the implementation of fees. If the occupancy levels reach 85% and exceed that so that the public is aware of the changes. And as things change in terms of the data and the percentage of occupancy, we would continue to have a robust communication with the public on the charges of the revenue and the fees and all that kind of stuff that will be associated with this in the future. So to begin with, just having that plan in place is really where we're headed with the IGA. Next.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Okay. We're at the end, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, so just a couple of questions. I'm assuming that if we were to move to a $2 per day parking rate in the hub, that we actually get that revenue and we don't give it to RTD? Or do we actually have to share any of that revenue with RTD?
Yeah, the transit hub, the structure belongs to the city, and we wouldn't share the revenue with RTD. It'd go towards our maintenance and operating expenses.
Separating costs, okay, good. Second question then I would have is, I would encourage us as we go forward with this and thinking about the future of an IGA that has some specifying of charging for parking at different times, that we really try to differentiate between the weekends and the weekdays. Just because the vast majority of the cars in there are from RTD, you know, 75% or more. And obviously, that's a big difference on a weekend versus a weekday. And that we recognize that and further by maybe not having a charge on the weekends and only having it on weekdays, something like that, that we encourage people to visit Old Town and particularly provide the environment where, whether it's festivals or events or anything like that can happen in Old Town without having any kind of a parking charge be any kind of an impediment. So that's just one thing. And then the last thing I would say is, you know, putting in place this plan to start charging when certain milestones are met, I think is fine. But I put one caveat on there. I believe the mayor and Nancy Ford and Mark Devon and I were all at a Urban Land Institute seminar a couple of years ago. And the mayor of Idaho Springs stood up and told their story. And he was facing a recall petition because they had instituted metered parking in downtown Idaho Springs. And their intention was to try to get those parking spaces to turn over and be more friendly to the businesses. But it was really not very well received. Or it was a very, very controversial, very tough issue for that town to deal with. And I'm not predicting that it would be that here. But I would suggest that the decision point, when the data leads to that decision point being made, that that come to council for a decision. That we're not making that decision now with this IGA in an environment where kind of the residents of Arvada don't really know anything about it. And then the day comes when we start charging and we say, oh, we decided that three years ago, you know, and some of us may or may not even be here. And so I would just suggest that the process by which that happens, that it's good to have that plan in place. But the actual decision to start charging people happens by whoever is the city council at that time, when that is actually met and not decided way ahead of time. Because I can tell you right now, I think most residents have no concept or are not even considering any, the ramifications of rules on the parking hub right now. And particularly, if you go in the parking hub right now, there's no cars in the parking hub right now. So it's not really relevant. But at the time it becomes relevant, we should make that decision. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Great presentation, nice job, fantastic, all of you. So just a quick question. You may have answered this, but I was listening for it. When you're looking at the 85% capacity rate, how long will it stay at 85% before you consider it time to charge a fee? You know my, how I'm just, I just don't think we should charge fees ever, and I'm not sure, my mind will ever change on that. But I also feel like I want to talk about having, you know, being able to park there longer for people that want to leave a car there and take the train into the airport. We've discussed this before, no need to rehash. But the 85% is my question. And that is if it's at 85% capacity every day for 30 days? Or is it every day for 60 days? What's that time period where, okay, we're at capacity for this amount of time?
Yeah, certainly. So RTD also had the same kind of concern about making sure that the occupancy level is not just a bleep, you know, 85% and then, you know, would back down. And we would basically look to, you know, manage it through a revenue and parking management strategy that involves charging. Basically, the IGA, I believe it reads 70 days, where it has to be a sustained 85% or greater amount of parking demand. And when it reaches that level, that's when basically we've confirmed that there is parking demand at 85% and we need to start to do something about it.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Is it possible to make that a little bit longer? Only because I'm thinking of seasonal traffic. You know, if it's seasonal, if it's springtime and everybody's outside having cocktails on the patio in Old Town, that could bring a lot of people. And then midsummer hits and people aren't in Old Town anymore. So that dives down. But if we're only looking at 60 days, you know, if we expanded that to even five or six months, I think, I know that's a long time, but for me, it would prove more of a long, consistent number.
Yeah, certainly understand the issue behind guaranteeing that there is sustained demand. The only thing is that for the person that is basically wanting to park and they come to the transit hub on a regular basis to take transit, to go, you know, to where they want to go to, they will have an impression that the parking garage is basically occupied. And they will have then a negative experience. And we're trying to kind of balance those two things where we're tracking the data to see how it's moving and trending. And at the same time, once it reaches threshold, confirming it, then to react and basically adjust for the customer experience. So it's kind of one of those things where we would lose that in the process if we did that for a longer period of time.
Ms. Ford.
So this question may be for Rachel. Rachel, on page five of 10 in the IGA, there was, there was a statement under number, or letter H, that said, "Arvada shall use the parking revenue solely to operate and maintain the hub." Is that because it'll be an enterprise fund if we start charging for parking?
I don't know if we're accounting for it in that way. My question, and I assume John could answer this as well. My guess is that the revenue from the hub, from the parking fees, won't be enough to actually maintain it. So I don't think there's a chance that we're going to have so much of an excess of revenue related to that, that we're going to use it for something else. But yes, generally, if we're charging a fee, we have to use it for the service that we're providing, so.
Okay. And then continuing with that statement, John, I guess I'll ask you this question. It says, "Or alternatively, for transit supportive uses that RTD has approved in writing." Can you give me some examples of what those alternative transit supportive uses might be?
Yeah, definitely. So when we were having the discussion with RTD about this approach, certainly we wanted to put the maintenance and operation of the garage, the expenses that the city incurs first and foremost. And given that this is not a moneymaker, it's not intended to bring large sums of revenue to the city, it's basically if we have any kind of additional revenue that we would put that towards programs where we would encourage transit ridership and mitigate the demand in the vicinity of the transit hub. So that includes the plaza, for example, where the G Line station is located and it's curbside and managing it. Or perhaps the bicycle and pedestrian connections to the station. So we're looking at the transit hub as a number of garage plus access routes and station platform as one unit. And that's where the agreement is meant to support a number of those things, especially if there is ecopass-type of opportunities for employees of Old Town to encourage them to utilize transit instead of parking. We would then be managing that demand, and that helps us on the garage side as well.
Supposing Arvada wanted to create a shuttle? You know, we've talked about this idea of the shuttle from the hub to the Arvada Center, for example. Could money be used for that?
No, I don't think it would be. The way RTD is interpreting this and the way we're looking at this is operation and management of the transit hub would be kind of the first and foremost use of the funds. And then anything in the vicinity of the hub, infrastructure-wise, would be the, infrastructure and program-wise would be a part of that program. So a transit service that serves a broader area wouldn't then necessarily have that nexus between the two.
Okay. And then, where it talks about RTD leasing some spaces. Does RTD do that now generally? Do they to private or non-RTD public entities? Parking structures in RTD system, either city-owned or where RTD leases some spaces to a private or non-RTD public entity? Do they do that currently? Would they consider even doing that at the Old Town hub?
Leasing their parking spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in the current setup, the way we have this is that they have, in agreement, a segregated parking system where a certain physical number of parking spaces is assigned to them and a certain physical number of parking spaces are assigned to the city. And we want to keep that in place, but utilize the capacity that we have in a shared manner between the 400 spaces and the 200 spaces. Now, in terms of what they would want to do beyond the current plan, they do have other agreements with other cities and other transit station areas with the parking structures in the vicinity that we would have to go back and renegotiate. The current plan is to keep the easements for those parking spaces as is and just operate it in a more shared parking type of manner.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is for Walker Consultants. It's on the recommendation two where it says, "If paid parking is implemented in the future, align costs of employee permits with new daily flat rate or dissolve employee permit program." And my question is, why would you recommend dissolving the employee permit parking?
Sure, that's a good question. Thank you, Ms. Ford. First of all, the reason to make sure it's in line is that we're not charging monthly parkers, predominantly employees, more than the daily parking rate. So I think that one is pretty clear. What we want to do from a policy perspective is not discourage employees' abilities from being able to afford the monthly parking rate because it would essentially be a monthly rate, so 30 days times the $2 a day. We don't want that price to be too much that the employees cannot afford those rates. So it's really a policy decision on behalf of the city as to So it's really a policy decision on behalf of the city as to how and if you want to charge employees for parking, because they're providing a different service to Old Town than an RTD rider is that's purely using that parking to go elsewhere for their business. You're welcome.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wish this, so for John, I, I wish this was a larger, broader conversation around parking strategies, because I, I feel like, in light of what's going on in Old Town and what could happen in Old Town influences how you're going to handle this IGA. So I have some reservations, the path we're going down in here, let me explain why. One is, I think that we should first look at, if anything about charging should ever come up, it should be first looked at on-street parking first, should be charged and let the hub be free, to encourage those to stay in the hub and, and get the churn of the on-street parking every 30 minutes, every hour, whatever, for those that just need to run in, get their haircut, run out, or get a cup of coffee and leave. And try to have those type of parking variations available. Because I think that influences this IGA. The other thing is, is in light of how we're using Old Town now, it's, it's been a long time thought for me, so I've been excited to cruise the, the streets of Old Town shut down like that, that we should probably, as a council and as a city, evaluate the benefits to the economy, the businesses, the, the citizens of leaving those shutdowns. And if that's the case, how does that impact the data you shared here? I think it's only maybe, what, two, three dozen parking spots if we were on, I should think Old Wadsworth, but maybe it's a little bit more when you include Grandview. But let's just say Old Wadsworth, say it's three, three dozen parking spots, how does that influence the parking garage as well? So I think there's some factors that may influence how this IGA might be written. And, and I don't know how we as council can help you with that right now without having that data and that vision and that strategy. So I'm a little worried about you signing something that may prevent us from changing that future, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so certainly, I understand the concern and I appreciate it. I think when we came to city council in April with a workshop, it was, the focus wasn't the transit hub and the IGA. The focus was Old Town and it included the transit hub. And as part of our strategy for, for what we're trying to do, we did look at the Old Town area in 2016 and had developed steps on how we want to approach the on-street parking spaces, how we want to approach the parking spaces that are in the city-owned parking lots, or operated by the city in parking lots. And then as part of that, given the timeline of this particular agreement, this had to move forward from the MOU to the IGA and trying to be thoughtful about the future. So the current setup and how we're driving things is basically to absolutely bring people into the transit hub and utilize that as much as possible for long-term parking. On-street parking spaces are two hours, transit hub is four hours, for example, for, for parkers in, in Old Town. Now, how does that fit in with everything else that we want to do, especially with the placemaking that we've done recently with the shutdown of the streets and allowing the restaurants to, to come into the public space, the, the street space, the sidewalks? So the number of, the total number of spaces on-street in Old Town are around 360 parking, on-street parking spaces. And in the vicinity, basically you have neighborhood, residential neighborhoods that are impacted by the parking that, that has happened in Old Town. And when we've closed the streets, it has shifted those patterns onto 57th Avenue and other nearby neighborhoods. We've been kind of tracking actually some of the complaints related to intersections, site distance, it has a lot to do with the parking issues on, on 57th. So there's kind of a domino effect. But in the process also, we've been trying to encourage people to utilize the, the transit hub as much as possible. And the current setup of the transit hub with the signs and the way they're set up is from time to time confusing for, for folks. That's at least the feedback that we've been getting. So we want to help simplify that, to encourage that. Of course, we're considering what's happening on-street as well with the data that we're collecting, and we have a plan that's specifically for Old Town. And this piece of, of our plan has to move forward with, with the expiration of the MOU. So we've been coordinating the two, but basically forced to, to move forward with this piece and circle back to, to the Old Town piece. We do plan to come back to that and indeed, the two are coordinated so that on-street is, is considered first for a, a, a charge for parking. And then we would try to push people to transit up the garage as a secondary location for, for parking, and then consider that at, at its thresholds.
Well, and I, I, you know, we need to continue to educate folks because they just don't understand. I always had this concern with the hub of the entrance and we probably can go back to the recordings when I complained about, no one's going to remember to go down to the movie theater, zip around the side of it, go into the back to get in, they're never going to remember that. And that's what's happening. And plus you can't get in off of any other street other than there. Okay, hindsight, we can't change the whole building now, but we need to do a better job at wayfinding folks to get over to that hub and get over there and do a campaign to notify people. Because I get, they're going to bleed into the residential and there's other strategies we'll have to, to probably look at there. But we really, really need to continue to push. We spent a lot of money on that hub and we need to make sure it's being utilized as we envisioned. And I know right now that the demand is a little bit different. So it's a little concerning that there's people being pushed into the residential when our hub is empty. That tells me right there, there's a fundamental flaw in our communication of how, of where people should park. So let's continue to focus on that and keep promoting it. But I just wanted to make sure I was on the record that we should always do charging on the street first, closest to the resident, push to the, the hub, or to the businesses and then to the hub. I, I encourage that, if, if we go down that path.
Sure.
And then I think councils should really consider looking at the road closures that we have there and, and make the, the public space more inviting there. I know it creates other problems, but compared to what it looked like 15 years ago to where it is today, it's a nice problem to have. And I really, 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 really enjoy having a cup of coffee in the middle of Old Wadsworth on, on the yellow line. It is, it is a great morning to sit there and enjoy, actually. So I, hopefully that could be a permanent thing. And I just want to make sure that when we do this IGA, that we're thoughtful about giving us, as a city and a council, the flexibility to change how we do our parking strategies in Old Town.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, I understand you have a question.
I do, thank you. So yeah, I, I, great presentation. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I, I do however, struggle with the concept of charging for parking. I appreciate the things that Mr. Pfeifer just spoke about, but I'm just curious, what if, if we never paid, if we never charged a, a citizen or a visitor to Arvada parking, what would that mean? And would that mean that we wouldn't have, you know, additional funds to support or maintain the, the parking hub?
So I'll, I'll answer part of the question and then also turn it over to Andrew to, to help with, with part of the answer here. So when it comes to what we're doing with, with the operating and maintenance revenue that would be generated, the, the intent of $2 a day, say compared to on-street parking, for example, that would be, you know, $2 an hour or something along those lines, a dollar an hour for eight to 10 hours. This is not intended to generate huge sums of revenue. It's, it's main, its purpose is to manage the parking levels within the transit hub and help improve the experience of the users. Now, if for example, we get the, you know, demand that we previously had for transit and the parking does fill up, then what we experience is folks having to not come back to the Old Town area to park and not take the transit from the Old Town station, which then also has impacts to our goals, which is to encourage that with especially the businesses in Old Town. Do you mind speaking to the question as well? Okay.
Councilmember Jones, I'd like to try to answer that question a little bit more broadly as well. Whether to charge or whether to not charge for parking is a 100% policy decision. Regardless of, you know, what policy looks like, any asset that the city owns incurs some sort of ongoing costs. And it's operational costs and it's long-term maintenance costs. And so the hub garage is relatively new and from a capital maintenance perspective, you haven't had to invest a lot of money into it, as you will down the road. Typically, structured parking is somewhere around $100 to $150 per space per year in long-term maintenance. So that's not every year, but you need to build up a sinking fund to pay for those bigger capital repairs. Think about, you can put wax on your car, but sometimes you got to change the brakes. And so changing the brakes is a capital cost that you have to plan for. Structured facilities, like parking structures, have those costs too. And you're going to see those cycles in typically five to 10-year increments and when some of those bigger items have to be maintained. You most recently did that with your expansion joints, that's a bigger cost. So the city has to pay for those one way or the other. And the question comes down from a policy perspective, do we allow the general fund to pay for those types of improvements in ongoing maintenance and operations? Or do we charge a user fee similar to you have for water and sewer? And that based off of how much of a commodity you're using, you pay a different rate. So if you don't use a lot of water or sewer, your bill is going to be lower than the next households. From an infrastructure perspective, operating, maintaining parking is no different on paper when it comes to dollars and cents. It really comes to what's the policy and who pays it? Is it the users or is it the, the city's general fund? And those costs are spread across all of the tax base. And so, you know, the things that we would say from our perspective is think about who those user fees should be paid for? Is it paid for the consumer that's coming down to Old Town to shop and to dine through a separate fee other than the food and beverage tax that they're paying for the meals that they buy or the drinks or the materials they buy from any of the other stores that are not food and beverage, other retails? Or is it the RTD parkers who are consuming a majority of the parking assets? Now, full well knowing that RTD wrote a check for the initial capital cost as well. Or do we spread those costs across all the city funds? So I think from a broad perspective, those are the types of questions that I would ask of, of council and, and city staff when making those decisions and how those not only day-to-day operating costs for the system come into play, but also the long-term capital maintenance costs.
No, I appreciate that. And, and again, it's a, I think it's a complex conversation for sure. I would just, I, I think that, you know, we need to continue to look at this because as we, to your point, as we evaluate the usage of the parking garage, with, with this change in how people are working, I have several friends who were so excited about the, the G Line and being able to take that to Denver, because they, that's how they wanted to commute to Denver. Well, now they no longer have a commute, either because they lost their job or because their employers changed their policy that allows them to work from home now. And they're not going to need that mode of transportation any longer. So I think, you know, we've got to get some more data around, you know, as we, as we come out of this pandemic and, and see the ridership and see the real utilization of the garage from RTD's perspective. But I, I think we also have to look at, kind of getting to Mr. Pfeifer's point, the, the tax revenue that's generated in Old Town because people are coming and, and will come because they know they can park for free. Again, it's only $2, it's not intended to be, you know, you know, punitive by any, by any stretch of the imagination, but if they know they can come and park for free in a safe, well-led garage that's close to just about everything they need to get to, is there an economic impact or boost because of that? And so I would just counsel us, or I would caution us as a council to, to, to look for some additional data points as we, you know, continue this conversation as to whether or whether or not we place a fee on parking for the Old Town parking garage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, great presentation, guys. Thank you so much for being here this evening and for all your hard work in putting this together. Secondly, I want to kind of echo the sentiments of Mr. Pfeifer as well as Mr. Jones on wanting more data on what our new normal will look like. In particular, the Old Town shutdowns, if, if we as a council decide that maybe we want to make that permanent or seasonal in the summer and holidays, there's a few different ways that could look. And we won't even know until the end of summer how the business owners in Old Town and the residents really feel. But right now, it seems to be a hit and I think it's important we explore that future for the future of the city. And also, thank you for mentioning the movie theater entrance. As somebody who drives that, I continue to believe we can and should make that better. Can't tell you the number of times I've had somebody in the car and I go in and they're like, "I didn't even know this was here." And I've lived in Arvada since the entire time the Old Town Hub's been open. So yeah, it's just inconveniently placed and we're going to have more and more going in right there across the way. So I, I challenge us to look for better entrance solutions there. So my first question then, and I've got a few, so sorry. In terms of the 50 cents up or down, I believe this is for you, Walker, can you kind of walk me through the logic here? Because to me, if somebody's angry about paying for parking, lowering it 50 cents isn't really going to incent them back because it's, it's more the principle of the thing. But gosh darn it, if you raise it 50 cents, that will make people livid, fairly or not. So can you, has there, has this worked in other cities? What's your sort of feeling on that? Because to me, it seems like it might introduce more controversy in that like, you know, it was 150, now it's 2, now it's 250, whatnot.
Sure, it's a fair point, Councilmember Simpson. And I think I can appreciate your comment about if you raise the prices, somebody's going to be angry about it. And if you decrease it, they're still going to be angry about it because they're having to pay something. So, you know, that being said, I think the reality is, that specific language in the draft IGA was at the request of RTD to have some sort of scale that goes up or down based on demand. The idea of reducing the rate if occupancy drops means that we have effectively moved people out by charging them in order to create open parking spaces for people that are either A, willing to pay that price, or B, are doing something other than parking at the transit hub to get on the bus or the G Line, meaning they're customers or employees of Old Town, likely. And so we don't want to disincentivize the fact that you have a committed number of spaces the city has access to. So by increasing that rate effectively, since RTD is the largest user of the facility, we don't want to disincentivize the public's access to Old Town. So that's what we increase the rate for. When we decrease the rate, it's to encourage RTD parkers that have possibly moved outside of the Old Town Hub, presumably to one of the adjacent stations, immediately adjacent stations, or possibly a completely different station or completely different line based off of their convenience. At a certain point, everyone has a price threshold. My price threshold for a good or service might be different than yours, which is different than the next person's. And so we want to make sure that we're best balancing the utilization of that garage so we can have that equity for all idea. Again, the equity for all is the different parker types, the RTD parkers, whether they're riding bus or rail, the employees, or the shoppers in Old Town. And so by having that adjustment point in there as occupancy adjusts, it suffices RTD's need to have the language in there to make the rate adjustments. The next question you had was, who else is doing it locally? The only other IGA that's in place, to my knowledge, is the I-Lift station in Aurora and that is similar language to adjust that. I can say that there haven't been, I don't believe, any price increases. I think there's only been price decreases in I-Lift as a result of demand.
Okay, thank you. I'm familiar with the principle, I was just curious if it really works in, in practice. Another solution may be peak hours, where going to Bob's like, we could, or Mr. Marriott's, it could be free on the weekends, 150 or $1 in the evenings, $2 for the business hours.
$1.50 or $1.00 in the evenings, $2.00 for the business hours to get where those high volumes are. And you're right that it is RTD, under normal circumstances, it's absolutely during the business hours as somebody who's a regular parker there. So my second question would be in terms of the long-term parking, I'm really, really excited that we have potential long-term parking built in here for going to the airport or whatever else needs others may have. $2.00 a day is a frickin' steal over Denver International Airport. So my thought is, and I don't know if this is likely to happen, but I can just see it being potentially happening, is that a bunch of people here on the west side of the city will park there to save money as well as inconvenience from having to deal with DIA parking. And then we might wind up having a lot of our parking eaten up by long-term parking. So is there potentially a limited number of spaces for long-term parking for airport that people could perhaps reserve in advance? Or if there's an open one, they can grab it?
Yeah, absolutely. There's technology available on the market that's essentially low cost, low barrier of entry, that allows you to be able to do that for a certain number of parkers. The recommendation at this point is we need to have more sustained data to monitor it. We only have data, essentially good data, to make decisions off of from August 2019 to December 2019. So it's a pretty limited amount of data. And as we have tracking data, we can make those adjustments to those policies to say, boy, we need to increase that rate because there's more market potential. And that $2.00 is a steal in your words. And that maybe the market is something higher, but certainly less than $25.00 a day to park in the garage at DIA or nine in the lots. So I think that as you have more data, you can have better information to make those decisions on. You know, to the other point, you may say, boy, this is really starting to be a problem. We need to possibly retract the number of days that we would allow. So something less than 30 or the amount of vehicles. The data is there to be captured to make those decisions and say, well, jeez, it should be 15 days and that'll take care of X amount of cars, for example.
Okay, perfect. And that actually leads me into my next question in terms of limits on long-term parking. We have a lot of residential in that area. So I didn't know if there would be a means of controlling, somebody may be parking a second car there for their own personal uses. Like, for instance, maybe you can't just renew for another 30 days or something like that.
Right. And so it's a good point. Certainly, paid parking, if you're storing a vehicle for personal use, is going to be a detractor at a certain point. If somebody's price sensitive, he's going to say, boy, this isn't worth it. I better find somewhere else for that vehicle to go. You could also put into place specific city policies indicating that if you're there for 30 days, it has to be vacated for X amount of days before it can park there. I know that there's policies around the front range that require that a vehicle must be gone for X amount of days before it can come back. I think it has a lot to do with trailers and recreational vehicles and boats for those purposes, but they work pretty well in controlling the behaviors. At a certain point, it'll become an inconvenience for the consumer to likely make a long-term shift in those behaviors so they don't do it.
Perfect. And then, this was just an idea, maybe more for our team, but if we're seeing traffic from Old Town spill into the neighborhoods, I know Denver and other cities that sort of have these kind of hubs often do permit parking for those neighborhoods, for the people who live there. It's free for those that live there. And you can get tickets if you don't have one of those permits. So maybe for Stocky Walter and some of these other historic neighborhoods around Old Town, something to consider as a means of controlling the overflow of residents parking that disadvantages the homeowners in that area? Something for consideration. And then I guess the last thing was just in terms of building up the reserve fund for maintenance. I agree that that could be important as opposed to it coming out of the general fund, especially when we don't know what the future of the general fund looks like. But what do we think would actually be built up in terms of the current maintenance needs now that we would expect to see every year versus at, say, $2.00 a day at 85% capacity? In five years, do we have enough funds to be able to do a major capital project or something like that?
So there's two things that you, the city, need to consider to answer that question. First is what are the ongoing day-to-day maintenance costs and operational costs? And documenting and categorizing those. But also putting together an asset management plan, which is going to tell you what the cyclical maintenance events are that don't happen on a yearly basis. You know, that's sealants, it's painting, it's concrete repairs. So having that asset management in place will tell you what those long-term costs are. And then you can put together a pro forma to tell you at X amount of dollars a day and at, you know, X occupancy, how much money you'll make and what is the deficit or surplus from that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Ms. Ford?
I had one other question. Do you find, are there any studies out there that look at perception of parking in a parking garage versus parking in an outdoor lot? Because personally, I would always choose parking outside in a parking lot. To me, the parking garage is very enclosed, it's dark. You think, I think of safety a lot of times. And I noticed a lot of parking garages today are very tight. So has anyone ever looked at that? Because I feel like we're all being shoved into parking garages. And I resist them myself. I know that that's not what the city probably wants to hear, but that's the reality, for me, anyway. I will never park in a parking garage if I have the choice of parking out on the street or in a parking lot. I'm spoiled. I'm used to the suburban way of lifestyle and I like that lifestyle. I don't like those tight garages. And I'll be very honest with you, our garage, I've parked there a few times, and I constantly have to look again to find out where that entrance is, to go up. It's hidden behind cars. There's no signage that I see unless I'm in a different level in my car or something. Because I find it problematic. And I don't know if other consumers here in Arvada find that. I don't know if we've ever done a study on that or looked at that. Because if you want to change behavior, I think that that's a good thing to do. This is new for Arvada. Arvada hasn't had too many parking garages that I'm aware of. And, you know.
You want to respond to that?
Sure. Councilmember Ford, that's a good observation. I would first say that the cinematics of Hollywood do not paint a good perspective on structured parking garages because they're always dark, they're not well lit, and there's always something dangerous happening in them. The studies that you're asking about, yes, we design parking structures as well. And we spend a tremendous amount of time and energy and dedicate resources every year to continue to monitor good design practices. There are a couple easy design practices that good parking design companies will do. The first is it needs to be well lit and it needs to have a good perceived safety. So that's different than active security, active security being cameras. Good passive security is, the number one thing is it being well lit. And there's a number of different ways to light garages with different lighting levels. And the type of consumer, whether it's a city, a hospital, or an airport, you might light a little bit differently and different times a day for different reasons. Another thing is, you know, the design geometrics you talked about with it being tight and hard to get into those spaces. Municipalities have their own design standards for generally parking. A lot of times, unless it's a bigger urban city, typically doesn't have design standards for parking structures, which is different than a parking lot. In a parking lot, you don't have beams and columns and walls and things that are in the way. Having good design modules and space sizes and turning lanes and drive lanes, you know, getting technical on it, is important and it makes a big difference. In a lot of cases, you can provide really good turning maneuverability. You just need to make sure it's done the right way. Not everybody is aware of those principles and philosophies and use that, which is sometimes why you might not have a good experience with that. Proximity to your destination and the type of trip you're making absolutely impacts it. You know, generally speaking, with the exception of Old Town, we're not in a really dense environment like we might be in downtown Denver. And so people are expecting to have a shorter walking distance, particularly if they're making a shorter trip, like they're just grabbing a cup of coffee or grabbing something from the store. So you're less willing to walk farther than you might be if you were going downtown for an afternoon for shopping or a sporting event where you're going to be away from your car for longer. That absolutely is perception and perception is reality. So everybody's individual comfort levels, I think, has an impact in that. You know, my mother-in-law is not willing to walk that far because she has mobility issues. It doesn't matter how nice the parking garage is, she has to be closer. You know, so those things play factors, absolutely. But, you know, I think the takeaway is good design principles can address some of those issues. The access issue for the hub garage is kind of a unique one. The topography plays into that and that you're going down that hill. And I'm willing to bet, we didn't have any involvement with the design of the garage, but the vehicle access across the railroad tracks is a safety issue that likely was debated, you know, probably for a while and just for safety, you know, of not only the users that are in their vehicles, but those walking across the tracks could have a lot to do with what the placement is for that particular garage. I hope that answered some of those questions?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll wrap it up here. I tend to agree with the, certainly I agree with the comments other councilmembers have made. I sort of look at this traffic issue sort of like the elephant and how do you eat the elephant, one bite at a time? I'm a little concerned whether or not the parking structure is the right bite of the elephant right now. So, you know, that's, and that because of the pandemic and because of what's happened to RTD, RTD's in big dog trouble. I mean, there's no question in my mind that ridership is going to be way down for a long time and it's sad to see. But because of the change that this has all brought about, that I don't know that the hub's going to be used as much as it had been used. And that it, you know, we do need to better signage people getting into it, changing their habits with regard to that. And to go along with Ms. Ford's comments, make it as attractive as possible for people to want to park there. I really struggle with paid parking in Old Town. I think it's, it's going to take a lot to convince me that that's the way we ought to go. And so I'm not real excited about that prospect. And frankly, it doesn't raise enough money that it really makes a difference. I think you get a lot more heartburn than benefit out of it. So with that, Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us at this point?
Not right now. We're going to factor all the feedback that we received and likely come back to you at a future workshop with some additional information.
My thought is that we ought to go back to RTD right now and say, you know, hey, we got to put this on hold for a little while in terms of finalizing an IGA with them because of everything else that's going on.
That's, I think, part of the feedback that we received from you, not directly until now, but indirectly, certainly through the conversation.
I can be direct.
Yes, you can.
With that, let's take a brief five-minute either stretch in place or if anybody needs a comfort break. I can't tell you how excited I am that we're having another presentation on the Land Development Code tonight. Okay, we can reconvene. Record, rule, council's present, Mr. Jones present by Zoom. Poor Mr. Jones, it's now 10:17 where he is. I thought we'd be done by eight o'clock tonight. Guess I don't know much.
I'll get that in my part.
Good. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I believe we're going to have Ryan Stachowski remote in to lead us on a more discussion about the land development code. You might have thought that since we approved it, there would not be any need for any more discussion, but there is.
Well, we knew that it was a moving target and that it was going to be continued. It's a living document. It just seems like it's happening awful soon. The birthing pains aren't over yet, I guess would be my reaction.
Well, comments noted. We will be briefed tonight. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm glad somebody got the message. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. This is not, this is not a discussion about a modification to the land development code or, or anything like that. Rather, because some of the processes and the procedures in the updated code are slightly different, or you will see them more regularly because of the way that the code is designed, we wanted to go through some of those processes and procedures tonight. So we're going to talk about an appeals process, which is something that city council has not seen regularly in the past. However, as a result of more administrative cases, there is the potential to have more appeals of more administrative cases. And therefore, we wanted just to kind of lay out what that looked like to you. Also, we're going to be looking at the conditional use permit, a new feature of the land development code, which is called major modifications, and then also a slight modification to how you view PUDs, planned unit developments. And so Rob Sutana is going to go through this PowerPoint at lightning speed to cover the highlights of some of those processes and procedures in the new code. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Ryan. And mayor members of council, yeah, as Ryan mentioned, I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible, but feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way.
Oh, trust me, we will.
So the first group of application types we're going to talk about are those that the council might see along the way, those items that are typically reviewed and approved administratively, but they, that may get appealed and be brought to you. Next slide, please. So those items, the certificate of compliance, the master development plan, the minor subdivision plat, the site plan, can all be appealed by the following groups of people. It can be an applicant or a property owner, and those may be different people. It can be a property owner that's adjacent to the site or across the street that's 76 feet wide. We pick that number because anything wider than that is an arterial street. It can be any property owner that has provided written comments before a decision was made. So if they provided a comment in opposition of a particular project, they could appeal it. On the flip side, you know, if the director denied a project and they brought in, supported the project, they could appeal that decision. And then anyone with standing under a 106 action. Next slide, or next slide, please. So the review process would be, we would receive, so that appeal has to be filed within seven days of the decision being made. The director would then have five days to determine if that person had standing, they met one of those criteria. And then following that, we would have 45 days to present that information to the city council. And again, all of these items come, go directly to city council from the administrative appeal. Next slide, please. So generally then, the evidence that you would be reviewing is the evidence presented to the original decision maker, and in most cases, that's going to be the director, and the applicable provisions of the land development code. I think Rachel Morris, our city attorney, might want to step in here just real briefly.
Yeah, I did want to raise to council's attention the fact that this is a bit of a different process than what we've utilized in the past. So this is more of a true appeal from a legal sense. When we look at a case, for instance, that's in court, when you go to trial, you present your witnesses, you present all your exhibits and your documents, all your evidence gets presented at the trial court level. So here, the equivalent would be the director. The director looks at all that evidence and makes a determination. Then when it gets appealed, it's more like what you would see in an oral argument before a court of appeals. So what the individuals are doing is the individual who's appealing the determination, plus any other side that might need to be heard, come before council and make arguments based on facts and evidence that are already in the record, that were already presented to the director, and argue why the director's determination may or may not be correct based on the evidence already presented. So council will have access to all of that. But the difference is, in, under these particular kinds of appeals, it's not like a public hearing that you would have on a land use matter. So we aren't swearing people in, we aren't, you aren't receiving witness testimony, you aren't receiving additional documents or facts. You are reviewing all the witness testimony and facts from down below, but you aren't taking in new evidence at that stage. So I wanted to make certain that we pointed that out so that that was understood before we go into anything like that.
All right, next slide, please. So then what your decision on the appeal, you have a few different courses of action once you have reviewed the record. And that is, you can find that the application is incorrect, and you could reverse that decision. You could approve an original application if there was some kind of modification that the director originally posed. You could approve the original modification with conditions, or you could deny the application. You may determine that the director made the appropriate decision and you just affirm that decision. You may find that there's part of the decision was correct, but you disagreed with another part of that determination. And so you can look at that instance. And then you can also determine that enough evidence was not presented, but that the, that sufficient evidence could be presented in a case. And so you would remand the case back to the original decision maker, the director, to give more information based on what the council was looking for.
Okay, let me, let me stop you there, and I'll have to go back to Rachel. So we no longer have the de novo process?
It is de novo in the sense that council can go back and look at all the facts and evidence presented to the director and make an independent determination without having to give deference to the director's decision. So it's de novo in that sense. However, you are not taking in new evidence.
So if we have, and we have one of these appeals coming up?
We do.
There will not be public testimony?
No, there won't. There will be argument about the public testimony that's already been presented. You'll have video, we recorded all of that. So you'll be able to go back, review it. You'll be able to review any documents that were presented, any public comment that was made or, or sent to the decision makers down below. But you won't take in new evidence at that stage.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask some more? Because I just want to get a feel for this. This is a new environment for some of us. So when you say there's video testimony or whatever evidence, and there's all this, so well, I'm assuming we'll get that before the meeting?
You will.
We'll need to do our homework. And then we come here, and then what do we expect here in, in the dais and the chambers? How do you envision that happening?
So we'll have any parties who are arguing on appeal, we'll get a certain amount of time to come before you and say, look, based on our code, based on the law, the decision that the director made in light of the facts presented to him was incorrect. And you'll hear that argument and hear them try to persuade you to make a different decision than the director. So it'll be pure argument as opposed to the presentation of evidence and argument.
Based on the evidence that was given to the director?
That is correct.
So who, who's, is it going to be the mayor's responsibility to ensure that no new evidence slips in, or testimony or whatever slips in by the, I would assume this is from the appellate side that will say this?
Yes. I mean, that's generally the purview of the, of the presiding officer. So yes, we can do that. We will also be instructing any parties who come before you on appeal of that very fact. So if someone asks, hey, you know, I've got so-and-so here, they're going to tell you about X that wasn't presented down below. We will stop that and say, nope, we're not doing that at this stage of the proceedings.
So there'd be an objection, basically, to whatever they're saying then?
Right.
Okay, a little bit different. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next slide, please. So I'll just quickly go through the four types of applications that you may see on appeal from time to time. The first one is the certificate of compliance with design guidelines in the Old Town area and in portions of Reno Park. Most of you are familiar with this process. But if a certificate is approved by the director, sometimes it does go through the design review advisory committee, sometimes it doesn't, just based on the scope and scale. So you may or may not have that record as part of the review. Next slide, please. So I won't run through all of these necessarily word for word, but there are four criteria that the director reviews waivers of certificate of compliance against. One is that the proposed land use activity is of a nature that will not substantially alter or the authenticity of this store district. Next slide, please. That the proposed land use activities of a nature that will undermine or impair or inflict, or conflict with the intent of the applicable zone district, being Old Town or the areas that are, have different zoning but are in the Reno Park design guideline area. The strict compliance with the design guidelines would create an economic hardship. Or that the proposed land use activity is of comparable architectural and historic value and authenticity, that it matches, essentially matches the design guidelines in those respects. Next slide, please. So the next process would be the master development plan. And that's a new process that we included in the code. It's essentially similar to a preliminary development plan in the past, but it's reviewed at the administrative level. So it's any project that would have phased development or includes two or more development sites, unless that requirement is waived by the, by the director. Next slide, please. So really, this, the criteria here is fairly simple, that the master plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and any ordinances, and that it establishes a logical and orderly development framework. So that as projects are reviewed at the site plan level, it's clear that adequate infrastructure, sewer water, open space, other amenities are provided in a timely manner to make sure it feels as a cohesive development as the various phases get approved through site plans. Next slide, please. Then we have the minor subdivision plats, which my guess is you're not going to see a lot of these, because generally, they're going to be associated with the site plan, which is the next process. But basically, these are subdivisions contain nine or fewer lots, or subdivisions that would be processed in conjunction with the site plan regardless of the number of lots. Next slide, please. And there are a number of criteria here that I would necessarily go through again one by one, but basically, just consistency with the zoning and the comprehensive plan, that there's no adverse, negative impact on the actual environment to the greatest extent possible, it's compliance with state and federal regulations, that there is compliance with the development and design standards in the LDC. Next slide, please. And then the site plan process. And this is going to be very similar to the process we have today, which is the final development plan, which is reviewed administratively. And we also still have the site plan process under the old code as well in standard zone districts. So it's not really a new process, but will be applied a little more frequently under the new code. So the purpose is just to make sure that a site plan, whether it's commercial development, residential development, industrial development, complies with the standards and provisions of the code. Next slide. Again, a number of criteria that that would be reviewed against, making sure it's compatible with the LDC and comprehensive plan, that there is adequate infrastructure in place or would be put in place with the project to make it viable, that natural features and are preserved to the greatest extent possible, that there's good quality connections with the development, multimodal connections. Next slide, please. That it's similar to the surrounding uses in terms of size and scale, that any mitigation is achieved to the degree practicable, and in the case of multi-family residential development, that there's appropriate amenities included with the project. So those are the four types of appeals that you may see. Moving on next, I'll talk about the items that you'll get recommendations from the planning commission regarding, but that you'll make the final decision on those. So next slide, please. So there's three of those. Two of them you've dealt with in the past, one is a new one. So first off is the conditional use. And next slide, please. So the purpose of the conditional use is just to determine whether a particular use is appropriate to the location that where it's requested. So next slide, please. And the criteria there, again, is pretty straightforward, that it complies with the LDC, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's a use that is allowed as a conditional use within the zoning district, and it is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district. The characteristics of the proposed use are comparable with existing and proposed development in the area, adequate facilities will be provided, and that adverse impacts are mitigated to the extent possible. Next slide, please. So the new process is the major modification, which under our old code and in the new code, we have the minor modifications, which is a modification from things in the regulations in the code, up to 20%. And those can be reviewed by the director and approved by the director based on criteria that's found in the code. If the development needs to go above and beyond those due to certain circumstances, or just because they believe a project may be better, have better design, then they can, a developer or an applicant can request a major modification. Again, those are things greater than that 20% that can be handled administratively. And so those items would go to the planning commission for recommendation and then to council for review. Next slide, please. Again, the criteria is fairly similar in terms of what you'd be reviewing. Is it applicable, is it consistent with the intent of the zone district, the comprehensive plan, it won't result in incompatible development, there would be no significant adverse impacts as a result of the major modification. If there are adverse impacts, that they've been mitigated to the ability, to the developer's ability. Next slide. And then finally, planned unit developments, which in the past you have dealt with. And if you remember, under the old code, there were, we called it a planned unit development and said they were unique zone districts, but we also had some base standards in the code that were always perceived, I think, from all sides as being problematic. So what we did in the new code is really take this to the true meaning of a planned unit development, which means, you know, it's negotiated between staff, planning commission, and ultimately city council as to what a particular project will look like, and the, not necessarily modifications of the code, but the differences from the code that they are requesting and having to justify. And for the most part, the new PUDs are intended to address a very unique situation. We hopefully captured, within the standard zoning districts, all the types of uses that make sense in particular locations, put the proper zoning in place throughout the city. But there are certain uses that are just unique and couldn't be captured in any of those standard zone districts. The example everyone always uses these days is Topgolf. If Topgolf came into the city, we don't really have a district that addresses 100-foot-tall screen fence for the balls, or the lighting that's necessary, or the two-story tees that are part of a project like that. So that's an instance where a planned unit development may make sense. Next slide, please. So in reviewing the PUD, again, the criteria is fairly similar, except that, again, you would need to determine that it's a unique enough project to qualify for a PUD, and that it's a project that could not be accomplished under another zoning district, another standard zoning district. And that it really generally complies with the intent of the uses, development standards, and design standards that are set forth in the LDC. Next slide, please. And again, there are a few more criteria. Again, it's basically are sufficient facilities available, is it generally compatible with the area, the intent of the area in which it would be located, and And if it's part of, any rezoning would have to be reviewed as part of a development plan, and they would have to be approved concurrently versus one versus the other. And then that's really it. And I'm available, Brian and I, and Rachel and Emily are all available for questions.
Good job, Rob. Ms. Fort.
Hi, Rob. I have my usual complaints. Where I struggle with some of the language in, for example, under the minor subdivision plat, it says no significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, or the use and enjoyment of adjoining property. I think that's subjective. And I can see where, you know, putting the responsibility of something like that on one person is tough because everybody is going to, what do I want to say? Identify that differently. And then also, under the planned unit developments, you know, substantial benefit to the city, that could be anything, really, in the mind of, you know, some people think economic benefit is the most important, some people think quality of life is important. What do those things mean? And I think that in order for the director to be able to substantiate his or her findings, somehow there has to be some way of defining those terms so that they're clear. Same thing with compatible, you know, and creative site design. You know, my idea of a creative site design is probably going to be very different from somebody else's. What does that mean? How do you define a creative site design? So, you know, and then, of course, you know, and a and a design that represents an improvement in quality over what could have been accomplished. Well, what do you mean by quality? What are we talking about when we say quality? Because again, that's a very subjective term, and it means different things to different people. And it also means different things depending on situations. So I really, I really encourage, and I hope that we're going to get rid of those terms or at least be able to define them. When we say compatible, what are we really talking about? And when we say substantial benefit to the city, what do we really mean by that? How do we come up with that benefit? How do we look at it? And again, I think that goes back to my question that I always bring up, you know, benefit versus cost, because something that looks like a benefit on the outside could be very much of a cost in the long run. So in arguing, I think a lot of these things could be argued. And what I would like to see happen is people walk away and feel like, yeah, they're in agreement with those terms. Because I think that's where we struggle sometimes with some of our projects, where we have controversy, let's say. Only comment. Thank you.
That, Ms. Fort, that reminds me of the old Supreme Court position on pornography. I don't know how to define it, but I know it when I see it. And so I think, you know, trying to put some definitions to these, I think, would be useful. So I think that's going to be an ongoing effort on the part of of our team on that. Any other questions or now that I brought up pornography in a city council meeting? But Ms. Morris knew exactly where I was going. She was nodding her head because it's, we learned it in law school one-on-one, let me tell you. Okay, I see no other questions. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Ryan.
This is good. You guys wear us down with pedestrian safety and shared parking and then, you know, something that.
There is a strategy here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Oh, yeah. And then we've got.
We will, we will, Mr. Mr. Archer is going to provide an update on the 10-year CIP.
Take your time.
Okay. No problems. So, Mayor and Council, thank you for hanging in there. We realize you've had a lot to deal with tonight, so we want to run through a overview of our 10-year CIP. And we did have a team of thousands that were going to come, but they ultimately voted me to speak the entire time. So you won. I'm here. So can we go to the next slide, please? They are all available on Zoom if you have any questions as we get in. So we wanted to reflect what we have done since 2015. So if you remember, we did the Assistant CIP Committee. They had a little over 19 recommendations that they made to city council. City council then went through and accepted many of those projects. And what you see here is the top 15 and how many we've addressed so far. I would like to point out that number 19 on the list was moving of central stores, and that is happening as well. And so we're quite proud of that, working really hard to implement all of those recommendations, both from city council and the Citizen CIP Committee. Next slide. So I get to be the bearer of bad news. As we discussed a little while ago at the last workshop, we talked about our 10-year financial plan, and that sales tax is estimated to be down this year. What that does is the funding, the large amount of funding for capital comes out of sales tax. So 20% of the first cent is required to be spent on capital or debt. That was an ordinance that was passed in 1960s, and that ordinance is actually 98101. So when we make reference to 98101, that is what we're talking about. That forces council and staff to spend money on capital each and every year. So what you can see is what is up there on the first line is the original amount of money in the current 2020 to 2028 10-year budget of what is required to be contributed per what the sales tax amount is that we're expected to receive. What you see on the second line is where we're estimating that number to be today. That is obviously fluid. Will move up and down depending on how our sales tax ends the year, but it does have an effect on what we can spend on CIP, and that adds up to rough numbers of about $9 million over this timeframe. Next slide. So we had to make some changes to make that work. So these are the proposed changes. You will notice that a couple of these items are familiar, Myers Pool, obviously, and some dollars to be spent on arterial streets. We feel comfortable that Myers Pool will still move forward because it's been a little bit delayed over the last couple of years. We've been able to take that funding and put it aside, and then we will be able to reallocate this approximately 1.5 million. And so we still have enough money to complete the pool. We still have enough money to do the studies that are required and the design work that is required over the next year and a half. You will see no changes in 2022. And then to summarize, we showed the changes that were made throughout the model. The big number on there is playground renovation. We feel very comfortable right now that the goal to get anywhere from two to four playgrounds out each year is a good number. We had built in a quite large increase in that, starting in 2023, but the current parks group feels like the two to three is a good number. And so that's what we lowered that to. And that's why you see those savings. Again, on the irrigation system, we were able to get some additional work done over the last few years, and so we were able to reduce that number. And then in the other is made up of a whole bunch of other items that were out in the future. Next slide. So what you see there is a listing of what is going, what is being proposed to city council to be spent over the next two years and then throughout the model. So you can see, again, there's still funding for Myers Pool, funding for streets and arterials, an increase in the signal replacement. We're starting to fall behind there a little bit. Some additional dollars to sidewalks, TOD and bike and trails. We'll talk some more about that here in a bit. And then taking lasting care for transportation, that is things like long-life markers and other items that go on the street. Some dollars put aside for Gold Strike Park. That was another item that was identified by the Assistant CIP Committee and accepted by council, but we do not have enough funding today to do that park, so we're just putting little bits and pieces in. And then finally, some TLC in and around the park system. Next slide. This is the same pieces of information for the water, wastewater, storm, and golf funds or our enterprise funds. I would like to point out that the detail for all of this is included in our current capital plan. So we don't have to dig into that detail tonight, but certainly if city council has any questions, we can. But this is what's in the plan today. We did do a water study, a water model study this most recent year. We would like to come back to city council this fall and dig in a little bit further into that. And you will see here in a minute why that is the case. Some projects have shown up that we would like to get programmed into the 10-year plan. But what you see up there is what we have programmed in right now and what was approved. There's no additions right now. One question would be, why such a large number for water? Again, that relates to our contribution to gross.
So we are looking that we're going to be able to finally be able to spend that money that we have.
Yeah, we're pretty excited. They they received their last.
They got their FERC.
FERC. And so now they just have to deal with localities, and hopefully that will go relatively quickly, and they can get started. So, yes, we're very excited. Slide. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So what you see here is a listing of the new projects that are being proposed in our general CIP, or dollars that are being proposed by 98101 funds. And you can see we put additional money to arterials. Those are streets that support our street system, additional dollars towards traffic. And then, as you see, we go down the page, majority of this is in and around traffic. We hear a lot about the need to improve our traffic system, to improve our traffic timing, and that is what they're trying to do with these dollars. While many of these are smaller dollars, they will enable us to identify what we're going to need in the future. Next slide. This is the reference to the water study that we did. So you can see many of these projects have been identified, but the funding for them, we've not worked through. We want, again, to talk to city council about this. If you add all that up quickly, it's over $100 million. There's no way that we have $100 million sitting in the bank if we do gross. And so certainly, we're going to need to come up with ways to fund many of these projects. Some of them are quite large, as you can see, the treatment plant or the storage facility, and some are just metering, et cetera. So we're going to look at a multitude of funding sources. Of course, grants, but we'll also need to look at TAP fees and then possibly user fees. So again, we'd like to have a robust conversation with council later on in the fall and figure out how we'd like to implement this moving forward. There will also be a wastewater study that will start probably early next year and will run for about 18 months, and we'll have the same list of caper projects that will come back to city council.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I just make a suggestion, particularly this water project list, since this is so large and has such big ramifications for us that we do more than just have a workshop on it, that we, we, over a period of time, kind of get some background in detail on at least some of these bigger things, and particularly the justifying the need for it and the relevant information about why now and why not later and, you know, kind of make sure we're really up to speed on these, because this is one of, it looks like it's one of the bigger things I think we'll face, and I think we want to really be prepared to make good decisions there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I know Utilities Director Sharon is wanting to come and speak to you about that and has really good background on all of that, so we'll pass that along.
Good. Mr. Fiver.
Actually, I was going to say the same thing that John said, you know, getting more.
You guys are always on the same page.
Yeah, okay. Very rare. It's late. Have lemonade. But I, because I did have questions like Rawson Plant versus the Water Treatment Plant. Those are actually some clarity around those two things. I think they're two different areas. But like John said, I mean, it, these are heavy lifts, and they're extremely important to our community, and it's a lot of money, and it's, I'd hate to be one of these things that gotcha and we weren't paying attention, but yet this is over $100 million. I think it's more than that, but.
Yeah, a little over $100 million.
But I agree with John. If we can just get some time to to really get into these a little bit more would be good.
Yeah, and that's the hope. So it may be more than one session. Next slide.
And we're going to have a robust conversation, you said, so.
A robust, yes. Hopefully. This reflects the other enterprise funds, so you will see that there are some additional projects that need to be budgeted, programmed, and dollars allocated in wastewater, stormwater, and golf. Next slide. So as we move through this, I certainly wanted to reflect the amount of work that's being done today. So you can see we have over $192 million of projects that we're working on right now. So to give perspective on that, we, the $98101 each year are about $10 million. So just from that alone, you're talking about programming out pretty far. We did our bond issues, went out 20 years. We did some additional dollars through the growth cycle that we just had, that we saved up and then spent. And then finally, you see some large dollars up there for our enterprise funds. Again, what's not reflected up there is the total for gross. So if you added another 80 million to that number, you're getting up around 270 million that we'll have under under contract or that we're working on over the next, and this reflects over the next three to four years. To give another perspective, the total general fund budget this year is 103 million. So this will be the total general fund budget times two.
And remind me, on the gross money, we have that in escrow, right?
So we've escrowed a piece of the gross money. The rest of the dollars are sitting on our fund balance, and we're investing them and retaining that interest revenue on the city side.
Okay.
Yeah, but it is reserved in our fund balance.
So we have the money, just so that whoever's watching doesn't, thank oh goodness, we have another $80 million.
That's correct. Thank you, Councilman Fiver. We do.
Okay.
Assuming the project comes in at approximately 110 million, which is what Denver Water estimated the last time we spoke to them, obviously, if that number goes up, we may need to move some things around. But today, we have the dollars. Next slide. This is just a detailed listing of all those projects. The next actually four slides are what those are. So if anybody would want to look at them or have any questions, you certainly can. Otherwise, we'll just flip through these. So next slide. And we can keep going. One more. And then I will end with our unfunded projects. So I wanted to point out that even though we have $192 million worth of projects in play right now, we've currently identified $747 million worth of projects that we still need to get to at some point. And I can tell you, those numbers are as good as we can make them. We spent a lot of time trying to get good estimates, and I promise you, that number's not right. I promise you, that number is low. And so you can see, we pulled out just a few examples. We completed an ADA study and have now are now working through what are the priorities to implement the entire plan. It would be over $80 million. Obviously, we cannot do that, and so we will be working on different facets that are of the highest priority. Leyden Road, which everybody remembers that we charge an impact fee for and a development fee to complete and improve Leyden Road. The estimates today say that that will exceed 8 million, and our total for the development and impact fees only 5 million. So the city will need to make up that difference. We have an unmet need on some traffic signals that are falling apart. Two of these are very near and dear to my heart, so obviously, I don't have much pull in this, but Eighteenth and Chase, Eightieth and Ames, Sixty-Fourth and McIntyre, Sixty-Fourth and Easley, Sixty-Fourth and Quail, all areas of the city that grew up a long time ago and have traffic signals that need to be replaced. We have sidewalks identified. A lot of really good work went into that, and all of those are identified. We need to figure out a way to pay for them. That's about $10 million. And then finally, I'll leave you with a waterline replacement. Our goal is to replace basically 100% of the lines over 50 years. That's how long they last. We've been chugging along at about 1, 1 and 1/2, 1.6%. We'd like to get that to 2. So that will also be part of the conversation this fall about how we can move that to a 2% replacement. Certainly, the challenge there is there's not a lot of companies that do this. And so to get water lines out there, we're competing with, as you know, Denver Water's replacing a whole bunch of their water line. And so we're not unique here. We will see if we can get out there and get some of this work done. Next slide. So that's a very fast, very high overview of what we're doing in the CIP. Not a ton of changes. The predominant changes are related to the reduction in revenue, estimated revenue from COVID. If that changes and our revenue numbers come in different, we will certainly be coming back to city council with putting many of the projects back in play that we've removed.
Quick question from Mr. Devon. Did these numbers? Do these numbers keep you awake at night?
Totally.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, and everybody's got the same issues, but, um, and, and by doing the long-range planning, we can certainly recognize that and, and try to chip away as much as we can on some of these things, but the needs always exceed the available monies. Ms. Ford.
Uh, Brian, I had one question on the trolley. It shows, I believe, the amount that we've set aside and with our grant as well for the restoration, but we still have to do the installation, right? So should, should that be, um, something that we put in there anyway, even though supposedly, you know, the Point 04 Trolley Committee is supposed, is going to raise it?
Um, that's certainly an area that we've identified that we need to work on how we're going to finance that for sure. Um, you had a presentation, I think, before March, I think it was in February, if I remember right, that talked about some various spots to put the trolley and we were going back and working on what, you know, where we can put it. Luckily for now, where it's being restored, they're willing to store it for a period of time and that gives us a little bit of leeway to try to figure something out, but yes, that's an unmet need.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't see, okay, Mr. Mayor.
I have one, just, just a quick one. So, um, a couple of, a couple of things I stick out to me here, one on these unfunded projects, one of them is the ADA compliance. What's the ramifications to the city of being out of ADA compliance? I mean, I, I know what the ramifications to my business of being out of ADA compliance is and it's terrifying. So does the city face the same gambit that a, that a business does about not being in ADA compliance?
So yes and no. Um, certainly my understanding and Rachel or Mark, if you want to jump in, part of it is we have to have a plan and we've done that. And part of it is we have to have a program on how we're going to implement that plan and we're working through that. And then finally, you have to be compliant. And so we do a risk analysis, working with legal, CMO in our risk area and identifying the areas that were way out of compliance, get those fixed right away and then work through the rest of them. And do you guys want to add anything to that?
That's correct. I like to say that a lot during budget season.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. One, one last thing and, and I think, I, I believe I know the answer to this, but I just want to, uh, bring this up. You know, we, when we look at this, we look at the proposed or what we predict we may have available for CIP funding as we go forward, looking at the tenure model based on the, the interesting times we're in. And, uh, certainly there looks like there will be some reduction in revenue. Doesn't really mean there's a reduction in needs, but there's a reduction in revenue. And, um, I think we need to keep in mind that while the CIP may see the reduction in the ability to, to, to spend on capital improvement projects and they, these may draw out longer, that we should hold no part of our budget harmless from the times we're in. So the CIP program shouldn't take it all. And I realize we have that 98101, so we, we can't take it all in the CIP fund, but, um, that this is really important expenditures too. And that if we see a reduction in revenue, that that reduction in expenditures needs to cut, needs to go across the board and, and not just come out of these things that seem like, uh, doesn't matter whether we do it this year or three years or five years down the road, but that we keep in mind, this is urgent and important spending too. And some of the day-to-day spending we do may need to face reductions as well as the CIP. So anyway, just an observation from me.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Ray. That's a great observation. And I will offer, the last time we went through, uh, a recessionary period, we actually did the opposite of many cities and we actually put more money into capital because we could get more for our dollar. And so we will see how and where we end up, but that was a direction of council at that time and it actually benefited the city a lot. And so, and obviously that was at the cost of operating. And so we kind of had to reduce operating more, but in the long run, it worked real, it worked out quite well.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you for asking.
Very good. I see no other questions. Before we adjourn, I want to go back to the appeal on the Grandview Station for a minute. Here's my concern. We, we did a certain process the last go-around that involved a public hearing with public testimony. We're not going to have that this time. I think we've got to get the word out loud and clear that the format's been changed because I, I fully expect that there are people who were anticipating on both sides of the issue, being able to come forward and, and give their public testimony, so.
Understood. I have definitely tried to, um, remind the actual parties frequently that this is your chant, going into that Design Review Committee hearing, um, I sent numerous emails saying, okay, here's what the process is. You're going, if you're going to present evidence that you want to be considered, Design Review Committee, that's the time. This is when we do it. So, um, what the, the notice, I, it sounds like you're concerned about the notice to the public. We can make certain that, that we do a really robust job of going out and making sure that, um, the public is aware of that, but we certainly have done that with the, the parties.
Well, that's, that's crucial that you've done it with the parties so that they don't have the expectation that they're going, on either side of the issue, be able to pack council chambers with people testifying one way or the other as part of their methodology to, to sway our decision.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mr. Devon, anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.